We are for football, but we cannot be in support of a deal that will negatively impact those who are most vulnerable.
But with the support of unions, city leaders, and the city's legion of football fans, the return of pro football in L.A. looks more certain than ever.
And reporter Rasha Goel was at the historic signing ceremony where the mayor and AEG president, Tim Liewicky, greenlit the construction of the much anticipated football stadium.
It's official. Just days after the L.A. City Council's unanimous vote, city leaders and AEG are signing off on the development of Farmers Field, L.A.'s new NFL stadium, as well as the modernization of the L.A. Convention Center.
This is a once-in-a-lifetime project.
The project includes building a 76,000-seat football stadium alongside Staples Center and L.A. Live. Plans also include transforming the Gilbert Lindsay Plaza, an area outside the Convention Center, along with modernizing the 50-year-old Convention Center.
Right now, we're number 15 in our ability to attract conventions. We will never be a top-five city until we modernize that Convention Center, till we expand it. This effort will help us do that. It will bring tourism, it will bring people from all over the country and all over the world to L.A.
Officials say it's not only about bringing back football. The modernization of the Convention Center and the building of Farmers Field will help create thousands of jobs for Angelenos.
There'll be 30,000 new jobs that we did not have here before and we're not taking from anywhere else. These are net new jobs, and they will put people back to work. Forty percent unemployment among the building trades. This project is a godsend, actually.
It's unknown which NFL team or teams will come to L.A.
I believe we're not just going to have an opportunity to get one team, but I think the mayor's right. We're going to have an opportunity to get two teams.
But a team transfer is a decision that has to be approved by National Football League owners, who are scheduled to meet next March when football season ends. Construction on the stadium and upgrades to the Convention Center can only go forward if a football team agrees to move to L.A. From downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
L.A. has been without an NFL team since 1994, when the Raiders moved to Oakland and the Rams moved from Anaheim to St. Louis. Carmageddon II may be over, but construction continues on the heavily congested 405 freeway. Gil Reyes reports on the recent 405 closure and what drivers should look out for now.
Crews finished the job hours ahead of schedule. They demolished the north side of the Mulholland Bridge and cleaned up the mess below on the 405 freeway. All this with enough time left over to pave lanes and fill potholes. Carmageddon II shut down the 405 freeway for 10 miles again. It came and went, just like last year's Carmageddon, splendidly, as most people avoided the freeway during construction.
The media did an incredible effort of getting the word out. And so, as a result, it all worked. Karma having too.
But authorities did issue several citations for trespassing during the two-day closure.
A couple skateboarders and a couple who had just gotten married. They went out there. They were married last night and they went out on the freeway. Not funny, very dangerous, they shouldn't have done it. Not a good way to start a marriage.
But a great way to move forward with a $1 billion freeway improvement project. Carmageddon is one and two just part of it. In this post-apocalypse, after Carmageddon, expect more traffic on the 405 and surrounding areas, as crews rebuild the bridge's north side. Crews must also fill in a 10-mile carpool lane gap. They're trying to build the nation's largest connecting HOV lane between the San Fernando Valley and Orange County. Caltrans officials have no exact completion dates for all this. It's best to check their website often and plan ahead for any possible lane closures. Off the Sepulveda Pass, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
You can receive updates on construction and lane closures on all Southland freeways by logging on to dot.c-a.gov. It's one of the byproducts of 9/11. Every year, the federal government hands out Urban Area Security Initiative grants. It's money that will help shore up L.A.'s preparedness in case of disasters and terror attacks. Anna Marcos has more.
The 9/11 memorial seemed a fitting place to announce the $61 million in funds that the L.A. region is getting from the Department of Homeland Security to make L.A. and Long Beach safer in the case of a mass disaster.
Safety doesn't happen by accident. Here in a hotbed of natural calamities and terrorist targets, our first responders and regional agencies never have an off-season. We have a commitment to be perpetually prepared.
Besides getting its share of earthquakes, wildfires, and natural disasters, the L.A. region is also home to some 3,000 potential terror targets. The federal government's Urban Area Security Initiative grant was born in the wake of 9/11. So far, L.A. region has received more than $600 million to make itself more disaster-proof. The funds have gone towards training and equipment for first responders, as well as a cutting-edge Joint Regional Intelligence Center.
We needed a Joint Regional Intelligence Center. We put that plan together, and it has now been operating for about seven years. It is the most successful interoperable system when it comes to intelligence gathering.
Every resource that's sitting out here today is for a very specialty-type hazard.
We can do building collapse, industrial injuries, auto extrication, but we have the ability to do light water rescue.
The money really has allowed us to grow as a department.
You're looking at about a million dollars' worth of equipment. This hazmat truck is just one of many gadgets that earlier funding years have paid for.
You're seeing your tax dollars at work. Whether it's sledgehammers, police bomb squad trucks, or fire hazmat squads, the state-of-the-art equipment and the first responders who use it are helping to keep us all a little safer. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The L.A. region has been getting the Urban Area Security Initiative grant every year since 2003. And locally, one councilman's office has found a way to beef up police resources in several police stations in these tough economic times. He did so by doing a lot of belt tightening and digging into his own district coffers. Here again is Anna Marcos, reporting from the LAPD Topanga Division Station.
This is an LAPD officer's dream: a wish list of the latest high-tech crime-fighting weapons and gadgets. And Councilmember Dennis Zine provided the $200,000 in discretionary funds to help police do their job better out in the field. Training guns, long-range binoculars, vests, night-vision goggles, emergency equipment, and more.
Something occurs in this area, and it's going to take about an hour or so for downtown to respond. Once they get the equipment prepared, this gives us immediate response, whether it's an earthquake or a suspect. And we know that a lot of crazy things are happening, so we want to have this division prepared to respond.
The old days where you'd surround the building and wait for SWAT team to arrive, that's not the way it is anymore.
The money for all this equipment is being split between three valley divisions: Topanga, West Valley, and the Valley Traffic Division.
These are our outer ballistic vests, and they just open up and just slip on like a jacket.
This piece of equipment, it can be used to bash the door.
This is probably about 30, 35 pounds. And occasionally, we have narcotics suspects, and they really don't want us to get in there. Because if they can secure their location before we get in, they can flush all the narcotics down the toilet, so this helps us to get in more quickly.
Councilmember Dennis Zine seems especially taken with one high-tech toy: a tiny adjustable camera that can see through cracks and behind doors.
Instead of me going over and exposing myself, this is what we can use. So you have an apartment building with a shooter. Before you run in, and there's a shooter, you use this to find out. It's safe, it's secure, and then you can go.
City leaders hope the money spent here has bought not only more equipment, but a lot more safety for both officers and the community. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Councilman Zine says he runs his office on such a tight budget that he was able to save enough to install surveillance cameras worth $700,000 in high-crime areas in his district. Those cameras should go up in December. And money is also being infused, this time, into local schools to help keep kids in school. Cindy San Luis reports.
AT&amp;T realized that we really needed to do something special, to help partner with public education, to really work to make a difference.
And so, AT&amp;T recently donated $600,000 in grants dedicated to help increase graduation rates to Proyecto Pastoral and Partnership for Los Angeles Schools. The donation was delivered at Menda's Learning Center in East L.A. Proyecto Pastoral, a community-building organization, serves over 2,500 students in Boyle Heights.
Good to see you.
The Partnership for Los Angeles Schools, started by L.A. Mayor Antonio Viegosa, serves nearly 16,500 students across 22 schools.
One of the most important issues of our time is public education, to ensure that young people like you have the opportunity to succeed.
Partnership for Los Angeles Schools and Proyecto Pastoral were chosen because of their innovative programming and inspiring results. And we are honored to partner with them in ensuring that youth have the tools for a better tomorrow.
Both programs focus on early intervention with at-risk students and provide a variety of support, education, and training programs that encourage students to remain in school and graduate.
No, we absolutely believe in each one of you, and we believe in the power of this neighborhood.
Every time I've called on AT&amp;T to partner with our community, they have been there.
And with the generosity of AT&amp;T, these programs can continue to help today's youth become the leaders of tomorrow. I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. This Week.
AT&amp;T has donated over $4.5 million in grants in the L.A. area this year. A local business supports a recreation center in need of refurbishment, but this business is offering more than just a check. Rasha Goel has more.
Over 150 volunteers came out to be part of the Big Give 2012, which will help with the revitalization of Denker Recreation Center in South Los Angeles.
The City of Los Angeles Recreation and Parks Department has over 435 parks in our system, and today, one of them has been adopted through the Los Angeles Parks Foundation Adopt a Park program.
The Denker Recreation Center has been adopted by Thomas Safran and Associates, a developer of affordable housing projects. This donation to help the center is part of their annual company-wide service project known as Big Give, which was started five years ago.
This year, we decided to go with parks. And parks is such an important part of a community, to have a safe, clean place for children to come and play.
But sadly, just days before this event, a teenager who was also a volunteer with Recreation and Parks Anti-Gang Program was killed while hanging out at the nearby Harvard Park, also in South L.A.
This young man, Patrick, he came to our park at 11:00 and 12:00 and got into our Class Park Team program that David here at this park runs. And he had been in our program for seven years. And he went on field trips. He got integrated, and he stayed out of gangs.
But Wrenken Park's officials say more than ever, ensuring our city's parks are safe, is of utmost priority. And back at Denker Recreation Center, volunteers roll up their sleeves to fix the baseball field, plant trees, create community gardens, and enhance rooms.
It truly is a community effort. In fact, these toys and different items that you see behind me were donated by residents who live in low-income housing that was built by Thomas Safran and Associates.
It's almost impossible to explain the amazing feeling anyone can feel to help someone else. I, myself, come from low income, and this is how I got to meet TSA, Thomas Safran and Associates. And it's just a great thing to see how they give back to the community.
When this day is over, we're going to see some real improvements at this park.
Improvements that will leave a positive impact on the neighboring community. From South Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
And we have more on that shooting at Harvard Park in South L.A. Also, some student musicians got a day named in their honor, and no more parking meters after 6:00 p.m. in one valley neighborhood. These stories and more in City Beat.
Councilmember Bernard Parks has announced a $50,000 reward for information that helped solve the murder of 19-year-old Patrick Carruthers. Carruthers, a student at L.A. Trade Technical College, was sitting on a park bench at Tatum Harvard Park in South L.A. on September 25th, listening to music, when police say a man approached him and shot him multiple times in the back.
My son did not deserve to die this way. He was innocent. He never saw it coming.
Carruthers had volunteered at the park and was later hired to the Summer Night Lights Anti-Gang Program. At Parks's urging, the city council approved the installation of security cameras at the park.
I, Jonathan Nguyen.
I, Jonathan Nguyen.
Having been appointed ensign.
Having been appointed ensign.
A special swearing and ceremony inside council chambers as Jonathan Nguyen was sworn in by his Navy captain as a junior officer of the United States Navy.
On behalf of the Navy, we'd like to present this to you. Now, Ensign Nguyen.
The special swearing and ceremony was arranged by Councilman Eric Garcetti, who was a member of Nguyen's Navy unit. Councilmember Bill Rosendahl and his council colleagues proclaimed Mark Twain Bellringer Day in the City of Los Angeles during a special council presentation last week. The recognition is in honor of the 22 student musicians from the Venice Area Middle School who served as ambassadors at the London Olympics, where they were invited to perform at several venues, including at Olympic Park, South Wark Park, and Hyde Park. Councilman Rosendahl, together with recording artist Johnny Orion, spearheaded an online fundraising campaign that helped close the gap on the $100,000 the students needed for the trip. Councilmember Tony Cardenas has introduced a motion to reduce parking restrictions along Van Nuys Boulevard in an effort to help more local businesses thrive and remain competitive. The motion asks that metered parking times be changed from the current hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., to 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. along the Van Nuys Civic Center commercial corridor. Business owners had complained that metered parking that lasted until 8:00 p.m. discouraged potential customers from patronizing their businesses.
He's not just any old mariachi singer. The City of Los Angeles recently honored a late singer whose music has sold millions and millions of copies and whose roots trace back here to Los Angeles.
Hundreds who gathered at the El Pueblo Historical Monument for the El Grito Mexican Independence Concert also got to witness the unveiling of a statue honoring the late Mexican-born mariachi singer and actor Antonio Aguilar. Immortalized in bronze, Aguilar is depicted in this 13-foot statue, wearing a mariachi costume atop a horse.
Antonio Aguilar, Don Antonio, is the John Wayne of Mexico.
In addition to appearing in movies, the Mexican John Wayne, Antonio Aguilar, recorded more than 150 albums and sold more than 25 million copies before he passed away in 2007. He still holds the distinct honor of being the only Latino artist to sell out for six nights in a row at New York's Madison Square Garden.
He actually also opened up the doors to many more Mexican artists who came after him, was the first Mexican artist to get a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame.
Councilmember Jose Wezar and Mayor Antonio Viegosa spoke Spanish to the predominantly Spanish-speaking crowd as they greeted fans awaiting the El Grito concert and congratulated the Aguilar family on the special occasion. Wezar spoke of Aguilar's humble beginnings, when he was known to have spent time on Oviedo Street as a youngster working in local restaurants.
He slept three nights here at Placita Alvera. So this is to honor him, to honor his family, and to honor the American dream, that all is possible when one works hard, puts their mind to it, is dedicated.
Today, Aguilar's legacy is continued by his son, Antonio Jr., and the countless number of fans who continue to play and enjoy his music.
The project was five years in the making. The statue stands in the small plaza south of El Pueblo's administrative offices facing Union Station. In this week's List of Things to Do, an inaugural film festival, an AIDS Walk, and Rail Evolution.
The inaugural San Pedro International Film Festival is taking place Friday, October 12th to Sunday, October 14th. The festival is organized in partnership with the Croatian Cultural Center of Greater Los Angeles and the City of L.A.'s Department of Cultural Affairs. The inaugural SPIF, as it's being called, will present new films, including narrative features, foreign films, documentaries, and student works. Venues include Warner Grand Theater in San Pedro, as well as Terra Cinemas in Rancho Palaz Verde's. More info can be found at spiffest.org. Sunday, October 14th is AIDS Walk L.A. 2012. Sign-in is at 8:30 a.m. with the opening ceremony at 9:15, and the walk stepping off at 10:00 a.m. The 10-kilometer, or 6.2-mile AIDS Walk Los Angeles will start and end in West Hollywood, enter at Melrose and San Vicente Avenues. Details can be found at aidswalk.net/LosAngeles. And Metro is hosting what it's calling the Rail Evolution Event, from Sunday, October 14th to Wednesday, October 17th, at the Loews Hollywood Hotel at 1755 North Highland Avenue in Hollywood. This national conference is an opportunity for you to join with people from across the country, to engage in thoughtful discussion about building livable communities with transit. Meet citizen activists, transit operators, government officials, and more who are dedicated to creating environmentally sustainable communities with transit. Go to railevolution.org to register. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
There are more than 3 million people who are deaf or hard of hearing in California, with more than a quarter of that population here in Los Angeles County. Cindy San Luis explains how an annual event is helping to educate the hearing community.
Thousands of people gathered on the City Hall lawn for the Ninth Annual Deaf Festival. In Los Angeles County alone, there are almost 900,000 residents who are deaf or hard of hearing.
One thing that's really important, to be able to communicate to other people.
Saying, hey, you know, sometimes we should be aware that some people may be deaf and hard of hearing, and how can we support them?
The event has grown over the years and is held every September during Deaf Awareness Month in Los Angeles.
We are here because Councilmember Tony Cardenas has taken an interest in making sure we continue the tradition of supporting the Deaf Awareness Month.
This is the first time the festival, which is normally held in Van Nuys, is taking place in downtown L.A.
Now that it's here in the middle of the city, it can actually pull more people in from, you know, other parts further south, further east. And I think it's just symbolic that it's here in front of our iconic symbol of the seat of democracy. And so I think it's fantastic that they're here.
Deaf people are your neighbors and your friends and your family, so you never know who a deaf person is, so just say hello.
The event is also a way to celebrate the advocates and volunteers who donate their time to help those that are deaf or hard of hearing. The Greater Los Angeles Council on Deafness, also known as GLAD, offers many social services for the deaf community. Aside from bringing service providers and advocacy groups together, the festival offers a forum to showcase the talents and achievements of those in the deaf community. Deaf performers Michael Anthony Spady and Evelina Guyna were recognized for serving as sources of inspiration and as mentors to deaf individuals.
Continue what you're doing, and we will continue to strive.
You all have the talents and skills to fulfill your dreams. Whatever you desire, do it, go for it, don't ever give up.
And participants were ready to do so, with a Deaf Got Talent competition and Deaf Model Fashion Show providing entertainment throughout the day. From outside City Hall, I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. This Week.
For more information on Deaf Festival, you can visit deaffestivalla.org. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning. It's Wednesday, October 10th, 2012. Welcome to City Hall. I'd like to thank my colleagues who are here on time. Councilmember Alarcon, Buscaino, Garcetti, Wezar, and Councilmember Zine. We do need a call from Councilor Labans. Good to see you, sir. And we've been joined by Councilor Wesson. And we've been joined by Councilor Wesson.
Okay. Anyway, sergeants, I need a couple of, one more member before we get started. I want to welcome everybody to the Los Angeles City Council, your Los Angeles City Council. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. You can come down if you'd like to give remarks before this body, or if you'd just like to see your government work. We do not have a quorum as of yet, so what I will do at this time, members, is turn it over to Councilman Garcetti for presentation. Mr. Garcetti, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It gives me great joy, Danelle Daddigan, who is a great friend, and if you have not gone to the founder and president of the Hollywood Museum and the historic Max Factor Building on Highland Boulevard, and Tom Laban's going to join me as well for this. But we are here to honor her and to honor an incredible foundation, the Jose Iturbi Foundation, which was created by her and Marion Seaberry in 1985. It's a 501(c)(3) organization founded in memory of the concert great Jose Iturbi. And the Jose Iturbi International Music Competition at UCLA is the largest classical music competition in the world, put on every summer, right here. And Iturbi was the first musician to sell a million copies of a record, that being Frederick Chopin's Military Polonaise in 1950, even before your man, I don't know.
Right, oh yeah, you're right.
Who we heard an impersonator of on Monday in CD-15.
Right.
But the Jose Iturbi International Music Competition at UCLA is the only music competition featuring classical piano and singer categories. All the candidates of the competition compete live at UCLA, which is, of course, here in the entertainment capital of the world. We have so many creative industries here that we think of Hollywood, we think of rock music, we think of all the design that we have here, but we are a great, high-culture city as well. And the foundation is dedicated to continuing the legacy of Jose Iturbi, to fulfill his wish to make classical music accessible and enjoyable to people of all ages and walks of life, and fulfilling his desire to bring the people's, sorry, to the public's attention, today's greatest emerging talent and prize-winning musicians. It sponsored the Jose Iturbi Gold Medal Series, which also is dedicated to presenting classical artists in the world-class, state-of-the-art, Southern California venue, Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts. It's also started to process, the process to preserve and restore the original master recordings of Jose and his sister concert pianist Amparo Iturbi. The foundation has started to re-release restored and digitally enhanced original mid-century recordings of Jose and Amparo Iturbi on CD. To date, three full-length CDs have been produced, and its goal is to globally expand the passion for classical music through the dynamic competition and compelling live performance. It gave away $268,000 in prize money, just for example, for the winners of the 2007 International Music Competition, and it distinguishes itself with giving the largest cash prize for first-place winners for piano and vocal in the world. So, Tom, if you want to say a couple of things too about Danelle, who's part of the family.
I just want to say, you said it all. Danelle is very special in Hollywood with all that you do, but this is very special too, because connecting the foundation to UCLA, the great university on the west side of Los Angeles, and music and art, it's all about that and the inspiration. So let's get Ms. Diggby daggered, daggered, big hand right there.
And on behalf of the city, I'm going to present this. I want you to...
Thanks, Jerry.
Well, I want to thank you also very much. At this point in my life, it's thrilling to be able to devote 80 hours a week to the Hollywood Museum and also to the Jose Iturbi Foundation, both nonprofits. I've worked very hard to be able to do this and feel blessed that I am able to share this with the public at large. Thank you so much for this honor.
Is there a website that you can go to?
Oh, yes, and the website, www.thehollywoodmuseum.com, and also joseiturbiefoundation.org.
Let's give her a round of applause. Congratulations. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Buscaino, Kardnis, Englanda, Garcetti, Wizad, Corretz, Corrian, Laban, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Wesson. Twelve members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Wizad moves, Corretz seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Parks moves, Perry second. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to our agenda. Before getting into it, there is a recommendation to refer item 29 to the Energy and Environment Committee.
Without objection. Okay, let's go through the first section of items. I think that's items one through six.
Very good, sir. Items one through six are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, any cards?
No, sir.
Members, specials. Okay, let's, Madam Clerk, let's prepare the vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, next.
Mr. President, items seven through nine are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, special, Mr. Reyes.
Call nine special for Councilmember Rosenthal.
Which item?
Nine.
Nine. Mr. Parks.
Yes, I'd like to hold item number eight, because I may have a, I have to recuse myself.
Okay, I will hold item number eight until you get the information you need. So let's then prepare to vote on seven. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Next section.
Mr. President, items 10 through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Are there cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on items 10, 11, 13, 21, and 26.
Okay, specials members, Mr. Garcetti. Sixteen for Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Zine.
Eight, twelve, twenty-one. Eight, twelve, twenty-one.
You want, you want three items?
Well, I think it's...
Eight's already been held, and...
Twenty-one's there, so let's put twelve up.
Twelve. Twelve for Mr. Zine. Mr. Laban.
Yeah, on 21, we've had a hearing in committee, I believe, but we want to have our friends from Ontario who are on their way here now, and Riverside County, to be able to get this presentation. Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Okay, let's, Mr. Clerk, where we vote on the remaining items, correct?
Yes, sir.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next.
Mr. President, items 30 and 31 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I think I'd like to hold them until I afforded an opportunity to chat with the Chair of the Budget and Finance. Mr. Parks.
Yes, I'd like to hold 30 just for a second. We have a question of the city attorney.
Okay, that's fine. We're going to hold both of those items till Mr. Corrian gets here. Now, where are we?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Item called special or public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Mr. Corretz, are we ready as of yet? I can do some... Okay, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Corretz and I believe Mr. Laban to the center podium for presentation. Mr. Corretz, the floor is yours.
I got it, I got it. Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Laban and I are here today to celebrate and mourn the passing of a Los Angeles institution, Campanile Restaurant on La Brea at Sixth, which is slated to end its magnificent run of 23 years at the end of this month. So today, we're thrilled to be honoring Campanile and its owner and executive chef, Mark Peel. Joining us here are Mark, his wife, Daphne Brogdon, daughter Vivian, Johan Drohlshagen, the general manager of Campanile, Christopher Eddy, the chef de cuisine, pastry chef, Michael Luna, and in 1989, this gentleman, owner and chef, Mark Peel, made a miraculous and remarkable contribution to our city and indeed the culinary universe. That's because in 1989, Campanile was created, and it was immediately acclaimed as one of the nation's finest restaurants, and this happened before Los Angeles became the foodie capital of the world. Throughout its 23 years, Peel continued the Campanile commitment to quality, but most importantly, to a lovely night out without any attitude. In addition to the daily grind of running one of the nation's foremost restaurants, as well as the recently closed Tar Pit in Council District Five, chef and owner Mark Peel has also trained and guided many of the most important chefs in Los Angeles to come along since he opened Campanile. He's truly one of the fathers of the LA restaurant scene. It's hard to write about restaurants better than Jonathan Gold, so we won't even try. We'll just quote Gold in a recent piece in the LA Times.
And Paul, what is so special when you talk about the run is what Mark did. He went into a historic building. He went into a whole historic building, which was new at the time, and he really transformed La Brea, which really was an avenue of, I used to say, vacuum cleaner repair stores. You transform it into galleries, other restaurants, flower shops, the good food, which also then went back to the Miracle Mile and the Renaissance on the Miracle Mile, which just completed their art walk recently. And also standing up as an artist, if I could say that, as someone who is with food, to create the food. I told your crew, I get stuck at Melrose and La Brea at Pink's more often than I get to Campanile, but the key is you started a revolution, which really transformed Los Angeles. The arts are part of Los Angeles because of what is taking place, but the food industry, how the artistry of those who know how to make food has created this whole different dynamic. So I wanted to stand with Paul today and salute you and your daughter, your family, and everybody, the whole team that is here. But you came, and I remember, because I was working for John Ferraro at the time, and I think the Park La Brea News used to be in that old building, and you put life to an old building where people have transformed. So Paul, take it away right here. Hold on just a second there, Rich. Okay.
Now, I just want to read a little quote from Jonathan Gold. "It's hard to overstate Campanile's contributions to American cooking. It wasn't the first fine restaurant in the country to operate with a grill at its heart, but it codified the style as well as the practice of reinterpreting simple dishes with first-rate ingredients and chefly virtuosity." Actually, it's a long quote, so I won't say the rest of it. I will say that our whole city has great cause to be blissfully thankful for the food that Campanile has brought us over the years, and for the igniting of a foodie trend that brought us tourism, jobs, and other huge economic benefits. We'd also like to express our gratitude for many charitable deeds and community-friendly, supportive activities done over the years, and we're sure that Mark Peel and all those who are part of the Campanile family will continue on with other exciting endeavors, other labors of love, certain to bring us joy and to challenge and amaze our taste buds. I know you're starting a restaurant soon in Terminal Four at LAX, so that will be, for a while, the place to find Campanile, and I know you're looking to open up another restaurant soon, so we look forward to that. Before we present you with the certificate, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you very much. I won't take very long, because I know you're doing...
Speak into the mic, sir.
Going about the people's business. I know you're going about the people's business, but we are kind of Johnny Come Latelys. My great-grandfather, Heinrich Schager, a refugee from the Franco-Prussian War, opened a bakery just down the street, on Spring Street, 104 years ago.
Wow.
Not bad. Not bad. We've been in this town ever since. I'm fourth generation. I love it here. I love Los Angeles. I love the vibrancy, the diversity, the energy, and the artistry of everyone, not just Hollywood, but manufacturing, design, every creative aspect of this community. A lot of people don't realize that Los Angeles, even though it's one of the great urban centers of the United States, is also one of the greatest agricultural counties and areas of the country. We get great tomatoes out of the city of industry, right now. Thank you, Los Angeles, and thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause. Okay, Mr. Corretz, we have a couple of speakers in the queue. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corretz, and thank you, Mr. Laban, for doing this. And to Mark and Daphne, I know this is not your last act, this is just the closing of one and the opening of the next, but this is very near and dear to my heart, not only because the two of you are such extraordinary people and great friends, but my sister worked at Campanile. She was a law student, and she'd actually go and was working as a legal clerk during the day. She'd come home and sleep for a few hours and then wake up for the late-night overnight shift at Campanile. And I don't think a lot of people appreciate just what an impact Campanile has had here locally and internationally, of influencing. It wasn't just one or two things. Mitch Engler turned to me, he said, "Aren't they known for their grilled cheese?" Well, of course you are, but that's like the latest of 15 things that you are known for. Your wine and your sommeliers who have been able to be a part of seeing places like Silverlake Wine come to fruition. You know, obviously, the bread that we buy in the supermarket that first was made at Campanile, that was part of gourmet bread coming to Los Angeles. But it was from the very beginning of a mousse bouche all the way to the last dessert and a coffee. Everything was a revelation whenever you went to Campanile. It's such a historic site. It saddens me greatly that you won't be there, and I wish that we could mandate it somehow that you stay. But life is full of many chapters. It's a beautiful, thick chapter, the heart of the book, but we know that another one will open up for you. So God bless you. Thank you for making our lives richer and tastier every single day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Corretz.
So in closing, I just want to read a couple lines from the certificate. "Therefore, be it resolved, the Los Angeles City Council hereby salute and celebrate Campanile, its owner and executive chef, Mark Peel, and all involved who made the sublime history and experiences of Campanile possible, including those who cook, manage, select it, and serve. The city furthermore acknowledges the friendliness, dedication, and wondrous tastes for which Campanile has been treasured by everyone who loves great food, and the spirit of generosity that has marked these past 23 years with acts of civic patriotism. So we thank them for the wonderful things they've done so far, and look forward to the great things they'll do in the future in their next incarnation."
Terminal Four, LAX.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Corrian. On items 30 and 31, I know Mr. Parks had some, not concerns, but wanted some data on item 30. Those are closed-session items. If you could suggest to us how you'd like to proceed with these items, and then I'll check with Mr. Parks to see if he's got his question answered.
We can make sure that the city attorney answers any questions that Mr. Parks has, and if he's satisfied, then we can deal with both of these matters in open session.
Well, why don't we start with 31?
But if you'd like to just hold that one on the desk for now, but 31 can be dealt with in open session unless another member has a question.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you could read item 31.
Yes, sir. In the case entitled "Near Ben David at All" versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $123,500 in settlement.
Okay, without objection. Let's, on that item, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Parks, have you, have you had your discussion with the, oh, you're having it now? Just give me a signal when you're ready on that item. Okay, now, we're going to go, we're going to take up item 11, called special by Arnold Sacks. Arnold, I didn't even see you come in today. Arnold Sacks and John Wash, HollywoodHighland.org. Please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. My question regarding this item, and actually also piggybacks on item number 10, but are you eliminating General Services Police, the General Services Police and the General Services Department? Because this is very similar to what this state legislation did, and by the way, blah, 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 blah. Should I stop and wait for all the other conversations, Mr. President?
Mr. Sacks, we're just doing the best we can to conduct our business here.
Okay, yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Stay on the subject.
Shh. Stay on the subject. You've done that again. I am on the subject, sir.
Now, when you're telling us to be quiet, you're not on the subject. Speak to the item. item. Speak to the item. We multitask here. Mr. Sachs, speak to the item.
I am speaking to the item, sir. You need to speak to the item also. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org.
Yeah. Go there immediately.
No, wait. Mr. Sachs, there are no exchanges from the audience. You had your time to speak. It is now Mr. Walsh's time. Please don't disrupt this meeting again. Mr. Walsh, I apologize.
That's fine. I'm used to being dishonored. Hollywood, as you said, or just go to anybody, Google "anybody but Garcetti" for mayor. You get right there. This concerns the LAPD insecurity. Stop me if I get off the subject. We went, they were gonna open a 24-hour nightclub downtown in the building, in the LAPD building, called Reflections. We fought them. There's not going to be any nightclub in the building. That adds to security. The city attorney's not here. Maybe I should stop, because he can't stop.
Go ahead, Jeff.
The LAPD, we have a problem again at the police headquarters, which is there is no money, which appeared in the press, no money for gardening. It's falling apart. It's filthy. Dogs, you got doo-doo all over the place. It's an illegal dog park. There's no sign it's a dog park. There's no security at the park, which is part of the LAPD headquarters. You know this. I know this. And until the L.A. Times does a story and everyone picks it up, we're not going to hear anything about it. LAPD doesn't seem to be interested in doing anything except the police chief's trying to figure out who the next mayor will be, because the next mayor will decide whether he gets another five years. HollywoodHighlands.org, go there right now and see the post I put up, and Mickey Jackson put up six hours ago. It is important. Bye.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Move 30.
Okay. In fact, Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to kind of keep this item, put it to the side for a second, so we can vote on item 30. Mr. Parks's concerns have been answered. And then, Mr. Englander, I will be calling you. So now we'll switch to item 30. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Mr. President, if I may, for item 30, in the case entitled "Susan Posh and Others versus City of Los Angeles, consolidated with the case entitled Tori Horowitz and Others versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $654,520 in settlement.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Okay, Mr. Englander, we're now back on 11. In fact, I've been informed, Mr. Englander, that the staff is not here yet from the LAPD. Would you like--
I think this is what I'm gonna do, anyway. On 10, 11, if I could, we're gonna go ahead and send it back to committee. I don't think it's ready for prime time. I think there's some still concerns on both sides of this issue that need to be ironed out, sir.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, what action, without objection, I'll just send those back to committee?
Very good, sir.
All right. Yes, Mr. Zine?
Our public safety chair, Mr. Englander, for moving this back to committee. I think there's some issues that hopefully we can resolve in the committee. I want to thank you for taking it back to committee. Thank you.
And I too want to thank you, Mr. Englander. Now, we'll go to item 13, called "Special" by Mr. Arnold Sachs. John Walsh, John, I have two cards on you. I have two cards, John. Mr. Sachs?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Arnold Sachs blogging at, you're not a lobbyist, so don't announce others blogging. You're not a lobbyist, Mr. President.
This is, the item is item 13. I don't need you to tell me what I can and what I cannot do. Anyway, Mr. Sachs, if you do not speak to the subject, then you will not be allowed to speak. Speak on item 13, and item 13 solely. Mr. Sachs, you speak to the item, and what you can do, you can give me your blogging, what have you, and I will announce it too. But now you're gonna speak on item 13, or you're not gonna speak at all?
Mr. Sachs, Sergeants, well, I'm gonna give you one last time. Speak on item 13. I ran out of time, Mr. President. No, wait, wait. Could you send item 10 back? No, here we go again. So item 13, and you could pick this up in my blogging address if the president would allow me, as he allows other speakers to do.
If you would speak to the subject. In fact, Mr. Sachs, I really do not, Mr. City Attorney, I think he's more determined to disrupt the meeting and needle-me than to speak on the subject. So Sergeants, could you show him a seat, and we'll get Mr. Sachs to come forward? Help him find his seat. Help him find his seat. Find your seat. And if you keep disrupting the meeting, we're gonna ask you to exit the council chambers. Okay, and he's content, Mr. City Attorney, he's continuing to disrupt the meeting. Mr. John Walsh, please come forward.
Okay.
Okay. No, no, don't holler. You're passing, John? Where, okay. All right, he passes. So on this item, Mr. Labange?
Just one question. This is going back to committee, Mitch. Okay, the one question I have, Mr. Chair, the component that it deals with--
Mr. Labange, are you on the right item?
Okay, Mr. President, I came back in. I'll send a note to the committee clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so on this item, let's, if we could keep it down in here, please, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Okay. Okay, now we're gonna go to item 26, which is Arnold Sachs and John Walsh. Please come forward. Mr. Walsh passes.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs, blogging, but I guess I can't announce that.
I didn't say you couldn't announce it.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't. Mr. Sachs--
No, we're not gonna--
Obviously, you had a bad day, or you're having a bad day. Now, you speak to this item. If you want to come to the podium and say Arnold Sachs at LenoxAvenue.com or whatever it is, go right ahead. I did not tell you you couldn't do that, but what I will tell you, you're gonna speak to item 26, or you're not gonna speak.
Stop me last time, is all I'm saying. This is an item regarding a business improvement district. And this is a story from the L.A. Times from September 15. And this regards the Westwood Village Improvement Association. Thirteen months ago, the market sponsor, the Westwood Village Improvement Association, transformed itself from a nonprofit into a business improvement district. Well, if it went from a nonprofit into a business improvement district, then it gave up its nonprofit status to become a business improvement district, which means it's making money for the district, for itself. How is that possible? How is a government agency turning a profit? And if it was a nonprofit to start with, and it becomes a business improvement district, who runs the business improvement district? Another nonprofit. Seems like we have a conundrum. But I know that it'll be solved because the city council is gonna vote 12-0, and that's how it's solved, 12-0, or 11-0, or maybe 10-0, whatever. But you can find out more information at my blogging site.
Okay, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zine, what about item 12? Wasn't that an item you had some concerns or wanted to speak on?
Well, I've been running around with all kinds of items, Mr. President.
Mr., okay, Mr. Zine, why don't you collect your thoughts? Mr. Garcetti, you had, I believe, item 16? Was it you, Mr. Garcetti?
I had 16, but--
Okay, then go ahead. And then we'll come back to Mr. Zine.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is just item 16. As you know, I've been a strong advocate of eliminating the backlog of LAPD's rape kits that could hold the answer for solving rape and other violent crimes, DNA kits, excuse me, that could hold the answer for solving rape and other violent crimes. I've prioritized personnel and resources to making sure this backlog was eliminated, and I was happy to announce the historic backlog of over 6,000 kits was eliminated last year. And reducing this backlog wasn't easy. It's been very, very tough times, as we know, for the city's budget. But the mayor and this city council, and I want to thank this council, made this a priority, set aside funds to hire more DNA analysts, and to contract with private labs to address the backlog more quickly. Now we have to make sure that a backlog does not happen again. So we need to work smartly and aggressively. I'm pleased with the efforts, and I want to thank LAPD, who really stepped forward. I remember a meeting in the back of these chambers when nobody else was seeming to listen back then to LAPD's needs, and we were able to work in our CLA, even in our tough budget times, it was just after the crash, stepped forward and helped us get that into the budget. And I'm pleased that LAPD is applying for the DNA Reduction Program grant from the National Institute of Justice. Federal funds have now helped this and other cities to be able to address this and continue to make this issue a priority. So I just wanted to thank LAPD, share that with the public, and let's make sure that it never happens again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I have one card on this item. Arminik Norjanian, please come on down. Take your time, Arminik. I don't want anybody to trip and fall, even though Mr. Walsh is real nimble on his feet.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good morning, respectable city council members. Good morning, fellow Angelenos. My name is Arminik Norjan, and actually, I'm a Liberal Democrat. And actually, I want to endorse that Resolution 16, and I believe that most of, I believe that this will be unanimously passed, you know, with Resolution 16. As actually, most of city council members are actually inclined to accept federal grants, you know, like this one, DNA Backlog Reduction Program grant is important, you know, in order to enable that DNA study program, you know, become a, you know, become a reality. And I believe that should be gladly accepted by the city of Los Angeles with DNA Backlog Reduction Program, so that cash-strapped city of Los Angeles will get some influx of federal money, you know, in order to enable its programs go up and running. But because without that forensic DNA backlog program agreement, you know, I believe that city of Los Angeles won't be able to run effective DNA study program, as city of Los Angeles experiences severe budget deficit. And actually, this money is very important, you know, it's 1,447,000 dollars, you know, that kind of money is important for the city of Los Angeles in order to make a DNA program work, you know. And I hope it will be unanimously accepted by all members of the city council.
Thank you. So on this item, no speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Okay. Let's move on to item 12, Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, we have been amending the motion on this technical word.
It hasn't been circulated.
I understand it has not been circulated.
It's, oh, so the ordinance is being circulated.
There was a minor modification, one word.
Yeah, Mr. City Attorney, it was one word.
Has to be in their hand.
And/or.
The ordinance should be before the council members when they vote on it.
Okay, is it being circulated now?
Okay, if we can get that item circulated, Mr. Labange, Mr. Krikorian?
On number 12, Mr. President?
Well, what we're gonna do, it's being circulated, the city attorney is suggesting we don't vote on it until the ordinance is circulated, even though it's a one-word change. So we're gonna now switch, go to another item. Mr. Labange, I see our general manager from the airport. Are we ready?
Yeah, Mr. President, item 21, if you would like to call that up now, and I'd like to ask the city administrative officer, the executive director of Los Angeles International Airport, and any parties to the center table, members, this issue is, came to the Chair, Trade, Commerce, and Tourism Committee concerning the opportunity that exists for Los Angeles to work in a regional fashion with the city of Ontario. And I'd like to ask Gina Marie Lindsay, Miguel Santana, to give us a report. We do have some comment cards, but we'll hear from those comments afterwards. Thank you very much, and welcome, Mr. Santana, and welcome Gina Marie Lindsay. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning. Item 21 is a report back from my office in relation to Ontario Airport. Back in March, we were directed to specifically look at a proposal submitted by the city of Ontario that would result in the transfer of the airport to that city. That specific proposal had a number of items. The issue that was obviously of significant importance to all of you was a $50 million transfer to the city of Los Angeles to its general fund. We specifically looked at the feasibility of that transfer and identified, based on conversations with FAA, as well as a separate city attorney opinion that has been submitted to you under separate cover, that that transfer of $50 million from the city of Ontario to the city of Los Angeles general fund would constitute a potential diversion of aviation dollars. That certainly would put other funds that the airport currently receives in jeopardy and would bring greater scrutiny, both from the FAA, the inspector general, as well as Congress, on the diversion of aviation dollars away from the airport. So it is our recommendation at this time that the city of Los Angeles respectfully not accept the offer that the city of Ontario has made. However, in the course of doing this analysis, we also reached a number of other potential ways that we could partner with the NLL Empire to maximize this asset. And so we are recommending that you approve a process that allows my office to facilitate negotiations between LAWA and now Joint Powers Authority that's been established in the NLL Empire to look at the acquisition of Ontario Airport by the JPA. That provides us an opportunity to give LAWA revenue, one-time revenue, to meet specific capital needs that they may have, and at the same time allows the city of Ontario and the NLL Empire to gain control over this asset, which is their primary interest. We recommend we move quickly in this process and establish a framework to determine what the value is, and then try to come back to the committee in 90 days, as was directed by Mr. Labange. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Labange, did you want to speak again, or can I go to the other members?
No, I just want to say, members, this is good. Our executive director, if you want to give comments, your safety first, value of the experience of going through LAX and the regionalism, but also the importance of this and what the CAO has stated. Thank you.
Councilman--
Councilman, all of that is true, and I would simply add pertinent to the topic at hand that we are very happy to participate with the CAO in negotiating a value and to see if we can get a -- an agreement.
Okay. Ms. Perry.
I agree with that. I just think that none of you are new. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and appreciate your report today. I was approached quite a while ago by flower distributors in downtown Los Angeles who felt that Los Angeles was missing out on its market share to do inbound and outbound exportation of flowers inbound from South America, and then, obviously, we have something to offer to the rest of the country. And they also felt that we were competing against Houston and Miami and not getting our market share of that potential business. And so that's why I introduced the motion in the first place, to see if we could take an underutilized asset and give it a new life or repurpose it. And so I wanted to ask you to make just a comment on the capacity for refrigeration. I know at the present time, we don't have that capacity, but what I had envisioned after talking to a number of these business interests, possibly a one-stop shop, beginning with, you know, flowers, and then maybe expanding to textiles and possibly electronics, but again, a repurposed airport. So tell me about the refrigeration capacity and what potential you see for that to be able to change.
Councilman Perry, thank you for the question. We have looked at that preliminarily, and it doesn't look like there is a robust enough market to justify further investment to that. But I would say that if we reach an agreement with the Joint Powers Authority, that might be something they would want to look at. There certainly is a robust flower market. There is provision for cold storage currently at LAX. Those facilities are very expensive to install, so I think we'd want to have a very good sense that there was a robust market that could be used by the Ontario Airport before we made further investment there.
Well, Mr. Santana, why don't I work with the chief legislative analyst's office? Because what sounds to me is there's a gap in logic, if you will, between what I'm suggesting and what our general manager is saying, and then maybe there needs to be some interim analysis that needs to indicate more fully and in greater detail whether there is a potential for the development of this kind of market and to make Ontario a flower hub, if you will. And so why don't I do an additional motion to drill down a little deeper, to see if we can extract more information out on it? Thank you.
Well, let me go to Mr. Caretz, and then I'll go to Mr. Zine, so you can finish your business.
Yeah, just a question on the previous effort to do this in such a way that we were able to obtain some general fund money as well. Does this action permanently eliminate any possibility of that ever happening in the future?
Well, we are advising, given the potential risk of diversion of aviation dollars and the risk that that would put LAWA and the city as a whole, that we not accept the specific offer of $50 million to the general fund. However, ultimately, the city does have other options, as we listed out in our report, not one that we're recommending at this time, but there is a pilot program at the FAA that allows for the privatization of airports, and it creates an opportunity so that the city could actually generate revenue, one-time revenue for the general fund. Should, for whatever reason, we not be successful in reaching an agreement with Ontario and LAWA, we could certainly look at that as an alternative approach. But based on my conversations, and certainly that of the executive director of LAWA and your own city attorney opinion, the specific offer of $50 million would likely constitute a diversion of aviation dollars.
Now, I thought it wasn't directly from airport funds, so there was a way that this would be structured, so that wouldn't be the case.
It's -- these are dollars that would be coming from the Ontario General Fund to the City of Los Angeles General Fund. It's not the source of the dollars that creates the potential diversion. It is the exchange of an asset as a result of that exchange in dollars. So the law is pretty specific that if LAWA were to sell any of his assets or divest itself of any of his assets and receive some kind of financial compensation for it, those dollars must stay within LAWA. And in this case, while Ontario made the argument that it was -- the $50 million was compensation for the dissolution of the current JPA that we have with them, that there was enough of a link that they felt that it would likely constitute diversion. This is also supported by the city attorney. The city attorney, ultimately, if your council would want to take a different approach, we were told very specifically by the FAA that they would not consider an actual ruling until they received an attorney, a legal opinion stating why we believed it wasn't a diversion. And our city attorney has already concluded that it's very likely to be one.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry for the delay. Gina Marie, good morning. The trip I had to Ontario was kind of distressed because it was basically rundown, closed concessions, et cetera. I know you and I have had conversations regarding Ontario, and I think what we need to find out is what is the best course for that airport? We talk about regionalization, the congestion at Los Angeles International Airport where you're doing the modernization, but still with the 405, which is basically the access from people of San Fernando and other northern areas, somehow the folks out east to make that work. So I don't think there's any argument that we want to regionalize. The concern is, what's the value? What's it worth? Bond indebtedness and all those issues. So my personal observation on it was that it's underutilized, it's not maintained very well, and it has great potential. And if Ontario wants to form this new group, the Ontario International Airport Authority, and they're willing to make that payment, and they're willing to not give that money to the general fund because it doesn't go to the general fund, it goes to the airport, you still have Van Nuys to deal with, you still have LA, LAWA to deal with, the International Airport. But if we can move forward, and hopefully in 90 days, as reports come through and come up with some conclusion. When they first approached me, the Ontario folks approached me and said, elected officials from the city council, so we'll give you $50 million and we'll pay off the bonds. Well, I spoke to those folks recently, and, well, it really wasn't $50 million. So what is the true value of an airport? What is the true value for the Inland Empire where they have this valuable land and this valuable facility and help the folks out in Riverside, San Bernardino County? So the cooperation I received from you has been tremendous. I don't think you're resistant, but you don't want to see us cheated. You want to see us gain, and obviously, the renovations cost a fortune because that's what it costs, and we want to modernize that. But at the same time, you're not saying we don't want Ontario to take ownership and move that forward with their population. But I think that, Miguel, if I'm not mistaken, you're going to do 90-day reports and bring to this council, and then we will hopefully move forward. I think it's worth more than $50 million myself. I don't know what the bond indebtedness is, but there is bond indebtedness. But the misconception is that we're going to get a load full of money into the city's general fund, and that's not the case, because it's going to go to the airport and utilize that for LAX and also for Van Nuys Airport. So with that, I'm looking forward to the reports to come back. Miguel, have you been out there recently?
Yes, I was.
What did you think?
Well, I lived out there for many, many years, so that was my regional airport, and it certainly has had more robust days, but it's still an incredible asset for the city.
Well, there's no question it's an asset, and you don't release an asset because -- just to relinquish it, to say, "Take it away." It's not like it's an eyesore. It needs improvement, but the fact is, there is a population out there, and I think that Inland Empire population continues to grow between Riverside and San Bernardino. So looking forward to the response, looking forward to the reports, and hopefully we can come to a conclusion, and you'll have more money for LAX International Airport and for Van Nuys, because I know it's a tremendous expense to keep those airports up and running.
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for being here. I have heard, like many of my colleagues, people from both sides of the issue. The driving issue for me is whether we can reach a deal to -- that makes sense for both the City of Los Angeles and Ontario, given the challenge of recouping LAWA's investments into Ontario Airport without violating federal law, and ensuring that the airport is viable in a time of economic hardship for the Inland Empire and the shriek in airline routes. So I like the idea of having the CAO and LAWA go back to the negotiating table and include all the stakeholders and come back with a new roadmap and moving forward. But I would like to see some of this money, if and when we get that money, into general fund. But I understand that because of regulations from FAA, we just can't. So Gina Marie, my question to you is, you know, how can we use that money once -- because I believe that it's going to happen, but when it does, how can we use that money effectively at the -- at our airport, at LAWA?
I think there are many opportunities for that, Councilman, and we can certainly work with the city council to be sure that it gets directed to the improvements that the council feels the most strongly about.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. The issue of funds that are generated in and around LAX, Ontario, our airports, and that money being segregated or not being allowed to bring it to the general fund of the City of LA, is that a charter issue, or is that an FAA issue? Where does that emanate? Who limits us?
It's actually federal law, and it regulates all airport revenues and the use of all airport revenues.
Okay. Now, when it comes to regionalization, that's a word that people have been throwing around a lot. And what comes to mind to regionalization of airports is where airports work together, maybe they plan together, maybe they even work with the airlines together so that flights are scheduled a little bit more appropriately to benefit the public, and with all due respect, to benefit the businesses who are in and around airports. An airport is a business. What is mind-boggling to me is that people in the Inland Empire keep talking about regionalization at every level, including at airports. But let me ask you this question. When it comes to John Wayne Airport and LAWA or Ontario, let's say Ontario and John Wayne Airport, do they program together very closely, or they're in the same region and they know of each other, but they don't necessarily program together because they're run by two different entities, right?
Right. Correct.
And how about Burbank Airport and Ontario Airport? Do they program together?
No.
No, they don't. But does LAX and Ontario, do they program together?
Yes, to some extent. And you may recall that when the original improvements, the big expansion at Ontario was actually affected, it was in anticipation that LAX was going to run out of room because the traffic there was going to continue to grow. So there was very close coordination in investing in Ontario as relief valve to LAX.
But more coordination between LAX and Ontario than LAX and Burbank, LAX and John Wayne.
Yes, sir.
Correct. But so, thank you for helping me make the obvious point. And the obvious point is this: If we were to relinquish responsibility and authority and ownership of Ontario Airport, to me, that's a step backwards in regionalization. Then we go back toward Ontario's being run by a separate entity, and they have to survive and figure out how to do that, and LAX will continue to run as a separate entity, and there is very little to no coordination, just like Burbank and John Wayne and LAX and Ontario and all the airports that are run by separate entities, correct?
Yes. I think the issue then becomes, is it a more effective way to achieve regionalization through competition, which is essentially what you're describing, where every airport is out competing on its own, or through a regulatory model? And to some degree, I think what we've been following over the last couple of decades is more of a regulatory model, where we've been trying to coordinate for the airports that LAWA owned, but yet not having the regulatory hammer to make the airlines fly one place or another.
And another thing that's important, Mr. President, and I need to help for the public to understand this point. Has Ontario been completely self-sustaining, or has our system of LAWA, LAX, supported Ontario, and have we made investments at Ontario that haven't, in fact, been a part of the revenue and the resources at LAX?
Ontario's been completely self-sustaining with two exceptions. One was the original purchase price for the land, and the second has been $128 million of passenger facility charges that were earned at LAX that were invested in the two terminal improvement projects at Ontario.
So how recent is the $128 million example?
That was the late '90s.
In the late '90s?
Correct.
Okay. Absent a big brother or a big sister like LAX for in Ontario, can you please describe to us the practical nature of where else would an Ontario get that kind of resources to grow and to perform without a big brother or a big sister like LAX? Thank you, Mr. President.
Their best opportunity for that would have been to go into further debt, to build the kind of facilities that are there today, which would have translated into even higher rents and fees for their terminals than there are today.
Thank you.
Mr. Alacón.
I think I have some of the same concerns that were expressed by Mr. Cardenas. You know, folks, if we look at this as just a moneymaker, then we are shortchanging the people of Los Angeles. The fact of the matter is, the coordinated regionalization of our airport system is essential for the well-being of our airport, but more importantly, for improvements to the airport system and to have the ability to mitigate some of the negative environmental impacts that occur. So I want to encourage my colleagues to not just look at the money issue. And if we're going to look at the money issue, then look at it 30 years down the road, because in the short term, we may make some money, but we may lose in the long run by virtue of enabling a competitor to enter into the international market and steal our business. So the questions that I have really are related to, how do we protect our interests in terms of regionalization? First of all, in terms of limiting competition, are we going to just take the cash and let them do whatever they want with the airport, or are we going to negotiate terms for -- that we can live with in terms of what markets they enter into? Are we just going to allow them to go into the international market? Yeah, Tony asked a question. Where are they going to get the money? They could get it from China by establishing international, you know, trips to China, and they could easily fund the development of the airport. And lo and behold, it seems the Asian Pacific Islander community is growing leaps and bounds in that area, and it could create real damage to the trips at LAX. So what are we doing to protect our interests in that regard? And secondly, given the longstanding environmental impacts that the airport has had on the local community, are there any way to extract benefits by giving up certain portions of business that might have a greater environmental impact and shoring up those that have the most positive economic impact at LAX and requiring them to take on some of the more challenging, from an environmental perspective, take on that business as a part of this deal that we forego some of the stuff that we've got going on at LAX? I just think that we're so singularly focused on the money issue, and it's a short-term issue. We're only looking at the short term, what kind of cash are we going to infuse into our general fund right now, when we really need to be looking at what's going to happen 10, 15, 20 years from now, because we would be perhaps imposing an incredible deterioration of the revenue stream for LAX on the next generation of Los Angelinos. And so what can you tell us about those issues? I mean, what are we doing to ensure that we protect our interests in terms of quality of life as well as revenue streams, avoiding competition in the future, coordinating with Ontario and the other airports as well, to ensure that we are not giving the baby away in this sale?
Councilman, I think our anticipation was to negotiate a deal that did not have any restrictions on it for the Joint Powers Authority, except for them to agree that there were no caps or limits on the kind of activity that they would have at the airport.
Well, I for one would be adamantly opposed to any deal that did not protect the other interests that we have. To just let Ontario do whatever it wants to do, I think, would be a sin against the people of Los Angeles, and I will not support that kind of effort. So I hope that you will dig a little deeper and look at some of the other interests in terms of regionalization. terms of regionalization that protect Los Angeles as the prime regional airport. And I mean, Ontario is juxtaposed, in terms of population growth, between San Diego and Los Angeles in such a way that they could steal a lot of our business. And they may have some cash today, but you might as well move the Chinese airlines over to Ontario, as far as I'm concerned, and I think that would be a huge loss to the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Englander.
All right. If I could, I believe we have a representative from Ontario perhaps here as well that might be able to shed some light.
I'm going to call him. You want him to come up now?
I was going to ask Alan if he could come up, since he's here, and I know he's been working on this issue, if he could come up, and I had some questions for him as well.
Okay.
But while he's making his way up and listening to all these discussions, and it's really not...
Councilman Wagner, come forward.
Just make a statement while he's on his way up. It's really not about whether FAA can or can't rule, and I believe, you know, we could fight that, quite frankly. I think we could look at the arguments on diversion and the fact that the $50 million for the dissolution of the JPA is argumentative, and we could build a good case for it, and I don't think we should throw in the towel on that argument. But more importantly, on the issue of having a regional partner as a competitor is a good idea as well, from my perspective. It's all good for the region, because if we look at just the management part of it and trying to regionalize through regulatory environments, what has occurred in the past with LAX and Ontario, I don't think it's a secret that anybody knows that LAX is really our prize here. LAX is a jewel. It's an economic engine here to this region, as the port is as well. As goods movement and passengers come in here, we certainly put a lot of attention and the main focus of transportation in LAX, and a lot of it gets, from my experience, and it's been a culture, not an issue of management, but a culture, over many, many years and many general managers and many elected officials, that the culture has been that all other airports and issues that come out of LAWA are treated as a second nature. And we look at what happened with Van Nuys.
Mr. Englander, you may want to ask Mr. Wagner your questions before your time.
And I think Van Nuys merits the discussion of looking at different management structures as well, but with Ontario, there's been a lot of push from Ontario, from the elected officials out there, from the businesses out there, to gain some more control, and that's really what the discussion is about. So if you could shed some light on where things are at and how they've gotten to the point of where they're at as well, please.
Thank you, Councilman Englander. Mr. President, members of the council. Alan Watner, member of the City Council, City of Ontario, a member of the City Council there for 18 years. So I've seen the peaks and the valleys of the business at the Ontario International Airport, and I think you're all aware that Ontario Airport is on the brink of disaster. In fact, Ontario Airport has dropped in passengers from 7.2 million passengers to just over 4 million passengers. In fact, if any of you have visited the new terminal, you'll know that, in fact, we have as many passengers now as we did in the old terminal back in 1983. So whatever investment was made there by whoever made the investment really doesn't make a difference because it's not being utilized. What I would like to do is, first of all, let me just state our position on the particular agenda item before you. The City of Ontario certainly supports the CAO's report, as well as the recommendation of the subcommittee that we get to the negotiating table and finally sit down and talk about a deal. But I must respond to some of the comments made by two of your council members. Mr. Cardenas, as far as regionalization, the City of Ontario Airport is now regulated by 100% City of Los Angeles residents. There's no representation from any other part of the region that's impacted by Ontario International Airport. In fact, the support that has arisen for local control of our airport has not just come from the City of Ontario nor the Inland Empire, it's come from over 120 cities, agencies, counties, economic development agencies throughout Southern California, including many in your districts. The Los Angeles Economic Development Council supports local control. The Los Angeles Times supports local control. And in fact, in scientific polling, using a polling firm that you use yourself, over 80% of your voting residents support Ontario controlling its own airport, 80% of your constituents. In fact, our regional authority is made up of residents of the counties of San Bernardino, Riverside, and Orange Counties. It is a regional authority to regulate a regional airport serving all of our communities. It's not in anyone's interest to see 100% LA city residents. As far as Councilman Alarcon is concerned, you know what? I'm really happy that you stated what you did, because you've made public what we have been suggesting for many years. The only reason that the City of Los Angeles and Los Angeles World Airport has Ontario International Airport is to control your own competition, and your strategy has been very effective, very effective, to the point that over 1.5 million additional cars are traveling from the Inland Empire today than were four years ago to fuse Los Angeles International Airport. That's how effective your strategy has been. So yes, what I would suggest is, if you continue on the present direction, there will be no Ontario International Airport, and your residents in your cities surrounding LA International Airport will be forced with the impacts from aviation needs of all of Southern California.
Councilman, if you can wrap up, and then I'm going to call you back up when we get to the general, I mean, the public comment period, so you'll have another bite at this apple, but if you could wrap it up now, I have other members that want to speak.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the courtesy to a fellow elected official. Okay, so what I was going to say is that we have an airport that was built to accommodate 12 million annual visitors. We now have 4 million on a steady decline. We have not seen an increase in over five years. There is no reason to suggest that it's going to be reversed. For the betterment of Los Angeles, your constituents, as well as the rest of Southern California, I encourage and strongly urge that you support the recommendation before you and that you expedite the process so that we have an airport to discuss negotiating over instead of a closed real estate asset. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I'd just like to make sure I understand what we're asking today is that, ask the CAO and LAWA to go back and study and bring us back the best management plan? So when we use words like "sell it," that's not necessarily the only goal, it's to look at the variety of things that are available to us?
Well, the specific proposal is, I mean, recommendation is number one, not to accept the original proposal Ontario has laid out for us, but to instruct my office to work with both LAWA and the JPA and the Inland Empire to come up with an alternative approach and that we report back within 90 days on the status of that.
So the alternative approach would be that LAWA's not the primary, in the sense of running the airport, but looking for an alternative to that operation?
No, it's specific to look at an alternative where the Inland Empire is in control of that airport.
Okay, so that's what I want to get to the point, because in reading it, it's unclear if we're saying that our mission is to give control to Ontario, is our mission to come back and say, here's the new plan that Ontario runs it, and here's the financial rewards for LAWA? Or is the plan to develop something in which LAWA has some role and is still in the management? That's what's unclear as to what's written, because in the comments, as we go back and forth, it's, to me, a misunderstanding of what the ultimate direction is given to you. So if you say you believe the direction is to come back with a plan for control by Ontario, I didn't get that in the reading of the report. When you said "alternative," I may have presupposed that LAWA could be just as well involved in that alternative management in an ongoing basis.
I mean, part of this is obviously going to involve negotiations on both sides. We do, in our report, we listed out a number of alternatives that the city has, and the one that we're recommending is one that allows the Inland Empire to acquire this asset and to ultimately manage it. If we're not successful in reaching that kind of arrangement, then obviously, we would continue to work with LAWA and with the Inland Empire as stakeholders on coming up with an alternative model to that.
Is the sum total of that negotiation price, or is there other issues that have to be worked out, or are we getting down to, if the price is right, that's the direction? I mean, is that how far we're...
Value is one of the main issues, and what we imagine the process to look like is that we would sit down and try to establish a way to establish the value, what criteria to consider, both in terms of the asset, the value of the land itself, the potential value of the asset, the investment that's been made, and how much has already been maintained. Once that structure is established, then we essentially would agree on a process to establish what that value is.
Could that process also include the prospects that, after looking at all these values, that you come back and say that LAWA should stay in control of it, or have we passed that hurdle already?
I think that's always an option. I think what we're recommending is that there's a potential for a path forward that allows the Inland Empire to maintain control of this asset, while at the same time providing LAWA one-time revenue so that they can invest in a variety of areas to meet their own needs. If ultimately, we're not successful in reaching negotiation where everyone can agree to, this is still an important asset to the city of Los Angeles, and we would want to make sure that it's maximized, and so LAWA would come back with a strategy to do so. They already begun that process, and certainly Gina Marie could talk more to that, but there's other options that the city could also consider.
My final question this time is, why one-time revenue as opposed to revenue over a period of time?
I think we would favor one-time revenue so that the deal was done, and...
Is it in greater benefit financially?
Yes, because of our significant capital program at LAX, and so there is more than several ways to spend the money now.
Mr. Reyes.
When I hear this discussion and I look at performance and attention, and given the statements that one would conclude that we've been neglecting the Ontario Airport, I just wanted, just for the record, to understand, looking at the attendance levels and given the description that was given earlier by our folks representing Ontario, to what extent have we been attentive to Ontario? Is it a reflection of the economy? I mean, we know that we went through a crisis that starts back in '08, '09, now three, four years later. The numbers that were essentially given were, I mean, I'm trying to understand, are we neglectful? Are we just focused on LAX and did we forget about Ontario? Are we dismissive of the regional relationship we have with our surrounding cities? I just want to shed some light on that, because there's a poor taste in my mouth as to how it's being described, but I want to understand what has been our priority and have we been attentive to our responsibilities in Ontario?
Certainly. Yes, we have been very attentive to our responsibilities at Ontario. However, that doesn't mean that the picture out there is a happy one for any of us, frankly. It's a very unhappy dynamic that's happening nationwide right now, that airlines are constricting their routes to the larger hubs. They have become very risk averse, with the fuel prices being unpredictable and with the economy nationwide being fairly sluggish, they have concentrated their activity in the more robust demographic areas, which typically is the larger airports. So many of the secondary airports, and like it or not, Ontario is a secondary airport to LAX, many of those airports nationwide have seen a significant drop in traffic. Now, that drop in traffic for Ontario has been more severe than it has at a lot of other smaller and medium hub airports, and the reason we get for that from the airlines is because they look at three things. They look at the unemployment rate, they look at new housing starts, and the average household income when they decide where they're going to place aviation activity.
So we can add many amenities that one would want to see at this airport. We could dress it up, we could state-of-the-art delivery of services, we can do all that, invest in those types of improvements. What I'm hearing you say is, no matter what we do, the airlines, the companies that make decisions, would not value or weigh that as a reason to increase flights?
Councilman, that is our view. We do think there are some other things that should happen at Ontario, and that is that we should try to bring down the operating costs even further, and LAWA has done that. We have really driven down the operating costs, but we've been chasing the traffic going down, so we need to continue to be vigilant from a management standpoint and be sure that we're managing the costs to operate the airport as well as we can.
Your time, Mr. Reyes. Okay, Mr. Alarcon for a second time.
It's the same as my...
Richard.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Let me make it very clear. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have this discussion about finding ways to better utilize Ontario Airport. In fact, when I was in the legislature, I introduced legislation to, which LAWA opposed, to look at Palmdale Airport and Ontario and their independence to better coordinate our regional system. What I'm saying is that the only consideration, we should not be looking at money as the only consideration. This is a huge deal, and moving forward, there's going to be tremendous impacts, some we can anticipate and some we cannot. But, Mr. Parks, when you said, why are we not considering ongoing revenue streams? You're absolutely right. Why are we not considering, for example, if they do get an international flight, how can we guarantee that we will get revenue that will enhance the transportation system in Los Angeles to feed that international system? Where are those discussions? The CAO's report is extremely weak on other considerations. He's only singularly focused on money, as far as I'm concerned, and that's his job. It's our job to look at the other things. It's our job to consider the other competition, and the Councilman from Ontario is correct. LAX has been dealing from a position of power, and I believe it has been neglecting Ontario and Palmdale, but I'm also saying, you don't negotiate a deal like this from a position of weakness. So we need to know what we're going to extrapolate for the people of Los Angeles first, and it's not just cash. There are mitigations that we still need to occur to enhance our environment. There are probably improved, there are ways that we can improve service to the east side of Los Angeles by virtue of enhancing Ontario's services. But how do we know what we're getting? And if we're allowing this joint powers agreement from Ontario's area to control that dynamic, where are we going to be, Mr. Reyes? Where are we going to be when we want to negotiate for the east side of our citizenry? So that your people can go to Ontario as easily as they can get to LAX, or easier with better service? That's what I'm talking about, and I'm not hearing any of that discussion here. This report is weak at best, and we cannot afford to look at this as a cash deal. We have to consider the long-term impacts. Mr. Zein, the controller, needs to understand long-term impacts of revenue. You know, we can sell out short and be out of here in one year like me, or we can consider the long-term ramifications for you guys that are going to be here longer than me. And you're going to pay a heavy price if you don't negotiate a much more intricate deal.
Your time, Richard. Okay, Mr. Cardenas.
Thanks, Mom.
In fact, Mr. Parks.
Thank you. Let me just say, from my questions earlier, I would hope that we would look at the first paragraph of your report and number two recommendation on the committee report and come back with the broadest response to that as possible. I get concerned when we appear that we're headed down a path, that the conclusion's already there, and we're going to go backwards and make everything match. But when you look at your report, you say we're going to analyze, and you list about six things you're going to analyze. None of them have been agreed upon, but if you bring us the analysis, then we can make a decision. The other issue on the committee report, it actually says in recommendation two, that they want certain things to be done, and there is no conclusion. And so I would just ask that we get the broadest view of all these issues when it comes back so we can make that decision, as opposed to narrowly funneling us into one direction without the larger picture.
Well, I could appreciate that. I know it's a fairly lengthy report. I know it's a fairly lengthy report. Our report does lay out a number of options for your council to consider, four different alternatives, including maintaining the airport under the status quo and working with LAWA to improve its overall capacity, and we actually brought in outside consultants to help drill down each one of those options. I think what we're recommending is that, based on all of these options that you have and the LAWA board has, that we are recommending one path forward that, one, allows us to maximize the asset, and, two, allows some level of local control. If ultimately that is not something that the council wants to consider, then you shouldn't approve that option. Then there are other alternatives that you could continue to pursue, including maintaining the asset and requesting that a more specific plan be put in place to maximize it.
Because from my perspective, if what you just said is accurate, and you're saying that's the narrowness of what your response, then that puts me in a position not to vote for it, because I would love to have a great deal more information than just saying we're going down a path.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Since Mayor Wapner afforded himself an opportunity to address the council, do you mind if I ask you a question, Mr. Wapner, too? Please come forward. Is Ontario Airport a benefit economically to the region there and to your city?
Absolutely, not as much as it has been, but it is.
They provide jobs to people who live in Ontario and the surrounding area?
Yeah, we've lost 10,000 jobs as a result of the downturn.
No, but the people who work in Ontario today?
In the region, the entire Southern California region, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very, very much. And that being the case, do the jobs that people have at Ontario Airport, do they tend to be on the lowest scale, on the medium scale, middle-class wages type thing?
The folks employed directly at the airport itself, there's only 300 people working there, normally should employ about 100 people, and according to the City of Los Angeles charter, they make about 25% more than anyone else in the Inland Empire because they make City of Los Angeles prevailing wages, not Inland Empire prevailing wages.
Okay, thank you. So the prevailing wages by the Inland Empire are lower than the standard that we've been promoting here out of Los Angeles?
As is the cost of living. Housing's about 25 to 30% lower as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm done asking you questions. Gina Marie, do we have a living wage ordinance in the city of LA?
We do, and we have a living wage ordinance that applies specifically to LAWA airports, which includes the Ontario Airport.
So in other words, if somebody does business with Ontario Airport, not just if they work for the airport, they actually have to pay their people wages and/or provide them benefits, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. As you mentioned earlier, Mr. Wapner, I appreciate you pointing out that the people over in and around the Ontario Airport don't have direct democratic representation about what happens at the airport, but with all due respect, I think that the community of Ontario, your city, and the surrounding region definitely benefit from this, quote, "liberal" way in which we run the city of Los Angeles, where we make sure that we have contracts with people who pay their people well, who pay them good wages, who pay them above minimum wage, et cetera. That's what puts people in the middle class, and I think that Councilmember Alarcon, who's a champion on those issues, would agree with me, that we would love to see more cities or more communities have their workers benefit from that. So with all due respect, the thing that I don't appreciate about this banter about us selling Ontario, trying to get the public opinion to say, "City of Los Angeles, just relinquish it, just practically give it to them." I think that's inappropriate, and the problem that I have is the people who are speaking that banter, you want the benefit and the glitz of owning Ontario Airport, but you're not willing to pay the price to run it properly and at a level that the city of Los Angeles has done so, and I'd like to end with this, Mr. President. When it comes to airlines deciding if they're going to fly in and out of Ontario or LAX or John Wayne or Burbank, do you, Gina Marie, decide what airplanes get there, or is it the industry decides where they want to land, where they want to go?
The industry decides. The airport has nothing to do with it.
It's the actual airlines, whether it's American Airlines or Southwest or United, they make those decisions, right?
That's correct.
And then also, overall, is air traffic down in the United States over the last five years?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, overall.
But five years ago, it was down?
Five years ago, it was down, definitely. It's growing back, but it's growing back at the larger hubs. It's not growing at the smaller and medium hubs.
Correct, not just at LAX.
That's correct.
LAX is a larger hub.
Yeah, just take a look at San Francisco and Oakland, it's the same dynamic.
Exactly. So my point is, ladies and gentlemen, listen to the details. Yes, we need comprehensive reports, et cetera, but one thing I'd like to note once and for all in one of our reports is, what is Ontario worth on the open market? Because this $50 million number that's been thrown around by, you know, the mayor of Ontario, et cetera, that's ridiculous. Regardless of where that money goes, should we relinquish our responsibility of Ontario, I think that it's only appropriate, and to be honest, with the people of Los Angeles who've entrusted us to run that place responsibly, pay people well, among other things, I think it's important for us to know what those answers are. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Listening to all the comments, this started out with a motion when I was approached by the folks from Ontario regarding ownership. Science City had ownership, and they wanted to move that airport. I had never been to the airport. I went out there, I looked at it, and I agreed that it needs improvement. When we look at regionalization, we've all talked about regionalization. I don't think there's any problem, the Santa Creta Valley going to LAX, the folks from the San Fernando Valley going to LAX, the folks from Hollywood and the West Side, they're not going to travel out to Ontario. What Ontario can service is that Inland Empire, but the concern for me and many others is when I have a flight at LAX at 6:00 in the morning, I'm leaving my house at 4:00 to get there because of traffic congestion. We don't have easy traffic flow in the city of Los Angeles, and it's not going to happen probably in our lifetime. So all we're asking for is a review, an analysis, and I agree with what everyone says. We're not going to give it away. It'd be nice for them, but we're not going to do that. What is the true value? What's it worth? And there was some concern originally that Gina Marie Lindsay didn't want to do and wouldn't want to cooperate, and my meetings with her have been very cooperative in this particular matter, so I have trust and confidence that we're going to do a proper evaluation. Mr. Alarcon, I just signed it second on that motion, because we need to do this in a coordinated effort. And the folks that come in from Upland and come in from Azusa and come in from all those other areas, they don't want to travel a greater distance to get to LAX. They'd like to go to the regional airport, if the airlines flew out of there, but there's fewer and fewer airlines flying out of there, and there's more closed kiosks than open. So I think what we have is the report that's going to be in-depth, you're going to find out, and then we'll find out what is the true value of it. We're not going to give anything away. What is the true value? And it'd be nice. When I first heard about that 50 million, I said, "That'll be great for the general fund," and then I was informed appropriately by our general manager of the airport to say, "You know what? That doesn't go to the general fund. That goes to the airport authority that runs two additional airports." But we've talked, and I hear the mayor talking all the time about regionalization, regionalization, we need to regionalize. What happened to Palmdale Airport? Don't we still own Palmdale?
Yes, we own the property.
We have the property, but what flies in and out of there? No commercial?
No.
And there's a huge, beautiful airport and the shuttle, well, the shuttle just flew into LAX, but nothing else we have. So we're trying to reduce the traffic congestion. We're trying to get people in and out of airport in a smooth fashion and not have to spend two hours to get to an airport and then have to sit and wait for two more hours because you want to take a flight to Las Vegas. And if I have my option, I always go out of Burbank because it's a lot quicker, a lot smoother, and less traffic congestion. So I think of all the comments, what did you say, Rich? Hang on, Vegas. I think with the review that we're going to see and the cooperation, and I think, I appreciate the mayor, the council member, who's a former member of law enforcement, Mr. Wapner, who's here on behalf of the Inland Empire and Ontario Airport, to make it in a cooperative fashion. No one's going to lose. I think the benefit's going to be for the people of Los Angeles, the people for the Inland Empire, and the regionalization that we can finally put to rest and build that airport up for their opportunity to serve that public. That's what it's there for, to serve the public. So that's my last pitch. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Part of the report back, I'd like for us to fold in this notion of how does the infrastructure perform? So we have the SKAGS regional studies, so the issue of trips that are being generated, given different scenarios that could evolve from this discussion, but I want to make sure we don't forget about this issue of impacts on our freeways, trips generated. In other words, if we have more people going to Ontario from the eastern portion of our county, does that relieve traffic as it crosses through the center of the city and going west to LAX? Where is the impact and at what levels? What are the assumptions? I think that should be part of the analysis as we start looking at the dollars and cents of this whole dynamic of feasibility and impacts. If we can fold that in, I'd appreciate that very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Okay, Mr. Labange, I'm going to call on you to close, and then I've got a public comment I'm going to deal with. So, Mr. Labange, to close.
This has been a robust, as Mr. Rosegal would say, conversation, but we're still way at the gate, ladies and gentlemen, way at the gate. I don't want to see us give up anything. I don't want to see us give up water. I don't want to see us give up power. I want to do what's right for Los Angeles. The CAO's office is going to do an analysis. The airport's going to do an analysis, but remember the key thing that you said. It is the airlines that control it, and in every belly, Ms. Perry, of a plane is freight, is flowers, it's a mixture, and the biggest change to LAX has been the Century Freeway, which dynamically moved traffic to the West Side and commerce. So there's many things, and they'll look at it, and they'll come back, and we got to make the right decision. If we can help a region like the Inland Empire, that's something we look at, but we don't want to hurt Los Angeles. Look forward to the study. Your committee of trade, commerce, and tourism will look at it, and we'll take the look and bring it back to you with all this great input. And I thank you, Mr. Santana, and especially thank you, Ms. Lindsay, for what you're doing for keeping people moving safely through Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. If I could get Councilmember Wapner to come forward again. It's your last opportunity to speak on this item, followed by Mr. John Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really have nothing further to add other than, again, I ask your support of the recommendation of the CAO and the subcommittee.
Thank you. Okay, John Walsh. Mr. Sax, you're technically out of time, but since you and I went at it, I'm going to give you another minute, so come on up.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Go right to the website, read what I put here a couple of hours ago. Just read what I put here. Ladies and gentlemen, we now have a bidding war. Ontario International Airport, how much is it worth? Opening bid, $50 million. I just got an email, Patrick Sun Shing, MD billionaire, mystery man, known as Dr. Nono, has bid $51 million for the airport. Next, Phil Anshutz, ditching one, picking up something else, it's a bidding war. Phil Anshutz, Anshutz, from Denver, $52 million. Ladies and gentlemen, you got an airport where nobody wants to go. You're big planners, what did you do? You planned for an airport that, for a people, for flyers that don't exist. Zine, it's easy to say it now. What did you plan for? $7 million? What did he say? You have $3 million? The airport is a dud. The airport is a white elephant with white wings. You are responsible. The politicians are responsible for building a damn airport that nobody wants to go to. So why don't we just turn it into a rave place? Let all the teenagers go out there and see their rock and roll and take drugs. Don't do it in the LA Coliseum. Do it at the largest airport, 100% white elephant in the history of the world, Ontario. Or send it back to Ontario, Canada, where it came from. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Sax, one minute.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. Question, who bought Ontario Airport? To begin with, the city of LA paid for the Ontario Airport. Why isn't the city getting the money back on its investment? Councilman Cardenas yapped about the living wage ordinance, which allows people to be paid a higher wage, but what does that do for their benefits? Well, it allows the company to eliminate the benefits on the living wage ordinance that you so robustly passed. And landing fees at Ontario, who decides on that? Does the industry decide on the landing fees? No. LAWA decides on the landing fee. And are the landing fees higher at Ontario than at LAWA? Yes. So when you're landing a plane that weighs 10 pounds, that may not be too big a differential, but when you're landing a plane that weighs 100 tons, you're talking about quite a bit of money. Does that play into anybody's statistics? And again, last year, the city bought property at LAWA, parking lot, garage. Does that money get transferred over to LAWA if that building is sold? Why is the city spending its assets and not getting return on its money? Somebody answer that question.
Thank you. Ms. Marie, you wanted to, Ms. Lindsay, you wanted to respond? It's my understanding you wanted to make a point of clarification.
I just want to clarify that the original purchase price for the land and the facilities at Ontario actually came from LAX, not from the city's general fund.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, I don't have a card on you.
Well, I gave one to your speaker.
Well, go ahead, Murman.
A very simple comment. Give this airport to Ontario on a lease basis, $1 a year for the next five years, and pay us on the end. And make them make a commitment that they're going to develop a beautiful airport comparable to John Wayne. Give the city an opportunity, not by cash burdening them on a forward basis, by allowing the community in Ontario to take acquisition of the airport, build it up, take that freight that's in LAX, push it out, take international traffic and push it out. I would ask you to direct your two officials from the airport authority to go to Manchester and La Brea, Manchester and Hawthorne Boulevard, to go stand next to Inglewood High School and listen to those jets come over every three minutes. I'd ask them to consider the benefit to Westchester, to Inglewood, to El Segundo, not to look at the financial benefit, but to look at the quality of life benefit of making a significant reduction in the amount of traffic that the folks here in Los Angeles in that area happen to live in. The issue is not 50 million, 100 million, 10 million. The issue is, is there qualified leadership in Ontario to effectively manage an airport that will benefit and create jobs and reduce the highest foreclosure community in the entire country? We need to look at how we can help Ontario and its citizens in the surrounding community from a ground-up position, not from, "Well, we'll $50 million," because we waste $50 million a week in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, on this item, no more speakers in the queue, let's open the room. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk for an announcement.
Thank you very much, sir. Before voting, I'd just like to make the members aware that amending motion 21A, that's Alarcon-Zine, is also before you, 21A.
Okay, let's, Madam Clerk, let's prepare the vote. Open the roll. Apparently, there's another card. Antonia Ramirez on item 21.
I just want to thank you for the double standards. I said many times that pilots stimulate the flow of commerce and the United States military protects our democratic sovereignty. We need both, and whether this airport falls under Los Angeles or Ontario, I say first and foremost, pilot, copilot, and engineer, safety, health, and welfare, and along with a hefty package, is a priority, and hence, you increase passenger traffic and tourism. I personally do not believe Los Angeles is capable of this great task. The LAX area and the airport is disastrous and filthy, not to mention unsafe, because it has employed several criminal illegal aliens and gangbangers, and you wonder why your luggages are missing? I do hope that the future airport dynamics raises it to a high standard for safety, expeditious, freedom-friendly, and you will increase the vibrancy and have access to all our private pilots, i.e., my beloved Daredevil pilots extraordinaire from Gillespie Airfield in San Diego, who incidentally comes and flies by all the time. Thank you, Gillespie Airfield pilots, hoo-ya, and also our military aviators, kick-ass baby, you're hot, law enforcement choppers, too, the pilots, they are, I mean, they can whip them puppies real good, pilots, sheriffs, and medevac. And again, lastly, first and foremost, hire military veterans and quit sucking up to these immigrants. And again, our card in it says, pay people well. Yeah, pay legal, law-abiding people well. That includes military... That includes military veterans and legal, law-abiding citizens, not wetbacks. And again, Herb Weston.
Come on, let's stay, let's stay on that item. Let's stay, let's stay, no, let's stay on the item. No, let's stay on the item.
And then finally, you get this African-American who pops in and gets to speak, that is unfair, and you do this all the time.
You got a chance to speak, oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, now, let's prepare to vote. Mr. Clerk, do you, did you already read the change, or?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Twenty-one A is.
Oh, wait, and to clarify, I had a card from Mr. Evans in the front that wasn't handed to me, and I received your card immediately after I was handed his card. So, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes, two noes.
Okay, let's go to item nine. It's my understanding an amendment has been circulated, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir, item nine is now before you. Amending motion nine A has been circulated, that's amending motion nine A, Ed Reyes for Bill Rosenthal, and seconded by Councilmember Dennis Zine.
Okay, on that item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now, it's my understanding that there was an amendment on item twelve, and so if you could read that, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir, for item.
Before you go, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a small suggestion on number twelve there. Part of the motion calls for a letter to be sent out by the department to the affected businesses, informing them of the ordinance. I would just suggest that the department also include with that a printout of the sign in an acceptable form, just a piece of paper with the language of the sign, so that the business doesn't need to go out and spend any money to have a sign created, it can just tape up the sign. I think it would be a simple way to make it a little bit easier for businesses to comply at a time when we're trying to reduce the burden on businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Englander.
Hi, thank you for that suggestion as well. Actually, it was, this was brought forward by Councilman Zine, who worked a lot on this issue. Graffiti is costing the city eight to ten million dollars in graffiti abatement each and every year, at a minimum. And what we're looking for is, we worked very closely in committee on this, we vetted the idea of the language, and as well as, not just the language of the sign, which you got an amendment on, but the actual language and the idea of the city doing something that's very unique, as being business-friendly for a change. We're sending a letter, working with the Department of Finance, to all those who actually sell spray paint, and letting them know that this is an effort to help them and to help their local communities, and that's what the sign is about. So, we do want something that's gonna be permanently affixed, not, not a paper sign, something that already has the details of the ordinance, and that's well-spelled out with the types of block letters, that has to be printed in the size, that's all been worked out with the city attorney's office and the ordinance as well. So I wanted to thank Mr. Zine for working so hard on this as well, and bringing this to committee and these ideas, because we've gotta combat this, and it starts with the retailers and making sure that they inform their patrons that not only is there a possibility of a fifty thousand dollar fine, but and/or possible jail time as well. So, thank you for that, and the city staff that's been working on this as well, and the city attorney's office, thank you.
Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Zine, for putting this forward, and Mitch, for hearing this in public safety. I can tell you this, this is one way to address the graffiti issue in our city. As a senior lead officer, I can, I can tell you stories in collaborating with schools and community-based organizations and teenagers alike, who are trying to find solutions to combating the graffiti issue across the city, and this will definitely help in raising awareness and working with our businesses. So I'm looking forward to supporting this. I wanna thank the city and the city department for making this happen, thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, thank you, colleagues. What we're trying to do is do away with this, I didn't know. The fact is, when they go there, they will obviously see it. Mr. Krikorian, we don't wanna cause the businesses additional expense, the problem is, we put up on a piece of paper, then someone comes by and just rips it off, and it's gone. And we wanna make sure, and I was at a hardware store this past weekend, shopping in a hardware store, where they celebrated a sixtieth anniversary, and I go to the spray section, and they've got the device to lock it, none of them are locked. I said, you need to keep this locked, oh, well, we forgot. There's many places aren't even complying with the ordinance that requires them to lock the spray paint, and throughout the city and every single district, we've got this graffiti, and it affects the homes, it affects the business community, and it sends a very negative message. So what we're trying to do is plug one more gap in this particular situation, graffiti, vandalism, tagging, however you wanna call it, and to put another notice up and say, this is it, because you have the cage, some places don't lock it, some places do, there's an ordinance that says you have to lock it, but we wanted to make sure that we put one more emphasis toward this eradication. And it's amazing, I'll go to neighboring communities in Los Angeles region, they don't have graffiti, they don't have the same kind of problems that we have, which deteriorates the neighborhood and the business community. So I understand, but we don't wanna make it expensive, but we wanna make it so it's legitimate, and if someone just puts on a piece of paper, someone walks by and rips it off, then it doesn't really qualify, is what we're trying to do. So, Mr. City Attorney, if you can address the concern of Mr. Krikorian on this issue about the signposting, the materials that they use, or however they post it?
Yes, Deputy City Attorney Brian St. Kelly. The ordinance would require that the sign has to be clearly visible for all the customers, the letters and numbers would have to be in black lettering, one inch in height and on a white background. It doesn't, it also has to be in conspicuous locations so patrons could see it. It doesn't go to the issue as to whether it has to be a certain type of material, however. Is that something that you would like us to address? We could.
So if they put it on a piece of paper and they put it inside the cage, they put it on a piece of paper outside the cage, I mean, what we wanna do is make it so it's, it has some impact, so they can read it, they can see it. If they can do it on paper, which I thought they would do something stronger than a piece of paper, because obviously someone come by and just tear it off, or if it's inside the cage or somehow, I don't wanna be too nitpicky on it, but we wanna do something that has some impact and that they comply with it. We're sending them out, as Mr. Englander said, a friendly notice that's coming out to the folks. So what would the city attorney suggest on that? How we, we don't wanna burden them with additional costs, but how do we do it, where it's not going to be something that we'll just flick off and throw away?
Well, as long as, you know, I've looked at other cities similarly, they don't address that issue, as long as the warning is clearly visible to the customer and, you know, legible.
So the store decide how they're gonna do that?
Something the store could, but, you know, if the sign's not there, they could be cited for not having the sign, so it's something they would have to bear the risk.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure that we do something to try and eradicate a problem that we get continuing complaints on. We did eradicate the trailers in my district, Mr. Englander's district, we did eradicate those advertising trailers, they're now gone. We'd like to eradicate graffiti, I don't think that's gonna happen, but at least we wanna bring it down to a less level that we have now. So, we'll leave it as it is, and if we have to do something later on. So, Mr. Krikorian, I guess they could do it on a piece of paper, as long as it has the one inch, if they wanna put it in there, and if they don't have it, then they're gonna have to find out one way to make it work. Okay, thank you.
If I may, there was one issue that Councilmember Englander had brought up with public safety concerning identifying the retailers of the, of the spray paint and marker pens, and we brought out a representative from the Office of Finance to speak to that issue.
Robert Lee, Office of Finance. Our concern is the fact that our database has retail information specifically to everything. It could be dog food, it could be spray paint, it could be anything. Due to the nature of the information, we cannot delineate that specifically what is, what sells aerosol painting, what sells marker. From that concern, we don't have a specific file or list that we can follow through on. We have done an additional analysis regarding naked codes, trying to figure out what we could target, and we've been focusing such things like hardware stores and such things like hobby shops. From that, we have been able to delineate about fourteen hundred items. But again, due to the nature of the retail business and the fact that we cannot target to specifically what they sell, we don't have that narrow of a focus.
Okay, Councilmember Zine, you're about two minutes over.
Go ahead, wanna close?
I would, I would suggest that we send this out to the manufacturers, the distributors. So the manufacturer distributors, as they do the delivery of the spray paint, there's only a few companies that manufacture and distribute, in addition to whatever notification you're gonna make, let those folks know. Because there's certain companies that manufacture and distribute, let them know that this is a requirement, and maybe they, as a courtesy, would make those signs up for the retailers. I mean, there's certain places that sell spray paint, other places don't, but we do have an ordinance, you have to lock it up, but the easy source, I would say, would be go to the retailers, or to the distributors and the manufacturers, and that's the ordinance that we require that the stores know.
Councilmember Zine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that, that approach might be helpful in terms of spray paint, but the ordinance also encompasses anybody who sells a Sharpie. And the problem is that any store in Los Angeles that has a Marks-a-Lot on the, on the shelf is gonna be obligated now, under penalty of law, to put up this sign. And the city can't even tell, as we sit here today, who sells them. So, we have no realistic way of notifying those businesses of that obligation. So my concern, I mean, I appreciate very much the sentiment of trying to warn people about the penalties of graffiti and try to reduce the incidence of graffiti, but at the same time, I wanna make sure that we do this in a way that we're not gonna impose a risk of potential criminal or civil penalties against a business for selling a Marks-a-Lot without having the appropriate sign up, because they didn't know that that was their obligation to do, because we didn't know, know who was selling it in order to inform them of it. So, I guess I'd like to hear what your thoughts are about how we can provide some real notification to the businesses that are subject to potential penalties under this ordinance, so that we don't have that, or are we only gonna rely on prosecutorial discretion?
Well, to address your questions, the ordinance would have to be published, as we do with other.
Speak into the mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. The ordinance would have to be published, so members of the public, or businesses would be, you know, subject to the publishing, that they would be responsible to understand what the laws are, ignorance of the laws, no defense. These penalties within the article are administrative penalties. Typically, the investigating officer will put the, from what I understand, by gleaning at the article, put the offending business on notice and have them an opportunity to remedy the situation first. And failure to remedy the situation would then subject them to potential penalties, I think the first offense being two hundred and fifty dollars, and then incrementally goes up in price.
So, in the process of enforcement, there will be an opportunity to cure, then?
Yes, there is.
Okay, very good, that's, that's fine, then.
There, and I was reviewing that prior to coming here, because I anticipated that question, under forty-nine point eighty-four point one zero, I believe subsection C, there's a remedy for the violation, which allows the responsible party to remedy this, or correct the potential violation, and show proof of that to the agency before discipline could be taken, because this is administrative penalties, it's not a criminal penalty.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, seeing no else on the speaker queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
There are cards we do have, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun here, we do have one speaker card, so let's reconsider the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We do have one card, Graffiti King.
All right, thank you, Matt Dowd, back, yes, first day back for a while, and reconsideration, of course. But let me talk about this one, because it reminds me of Life of Brian, Monty Python, the Monty Python movie, where the activists make Brian, they make him right up on the walls of the Roman emperor, they, Romane et domum, which is Romans go home. And I was just surprised at the reaction, like, at the word wetback, if someone wrote wetbacks go home, that the offense, the offensive reaction is like, just for a stupid word like that in America, and then there was a whole.
Please stick to the item in front of you, sir.
Okay, so, this is a good item, I mean, it's a, it's a great thing, except where Paul Krikorian mentions, the marker pens, they're everywhere, so you're expecting the Office of Finance to pay for this outreach to every store that sells a marker pen? That's every seven eleven, every, it's everything, and, and then it brings me back to the wording here, where you've got, send cordial written notice of the requirement with a six-month grace period. Now, here's my point, a federal judge issued an injunction against the boardwalk ordinance, and did we get a six-month grace period? Did we get a cordial notice? Why don't we get that courtesy? And so now, it all comes back to Paul Krikorian, because everything in the city now lands on Paul Krikorian's head, because he's the chair of Budget and Finance. And the Venice thing is still going on, going to appeal one of these cases now, too, because the city didn't give any of the boardwalk vendors a six-month cordial.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the speaker cards, no one else on the queue, let's open the roll. Councilman Krikorian? Do we have additional discussion on this item? Councilman Krikorian?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. In light of the discussion that we had earlier about the notice, the notice provisions and the opportunity to cure that businesses will have, I appreciate that the motion included an instruction to the Office of Finance to provide a letter informing businesses about this new ordinance, but considering that we really don't have a clear list of who is selling these items, it seems to me we would be sending that letter to a broader net of businesses than is necessary at, at some expense, and warning people potentially that aren't even subject to this. So, given the fact that there's a notice and opportunity to cure, I think that it's, the normal process that we go through with most ordinances of publication probably meets the needs of notification of the relevant businesses. So I would recommend that we strike the requirement that the Office of Finance send the letters at all, and we just simply rely on the publication process, if that's acceptable as a friendly amendment to Mr. Zine.
I think that's the only way we can really approach, otherwise, we're gonna send letters out to thousands of businesses, that, what are you sending me a letter for, and the, the cost of the posters, et cetera. So, many, many ordinances we pass, they're on the books, building and safety, or my posse would ever go out there and inform the people, and they'll have to comply. So I, I think it's a, it's a great suggestion, so I'd support that. Thank you.
So there, that is a friendly amendment?
Yes, sir, and for clarification, that would be to strike recommendation two B, again, recommendation two B.
Okay, seeing no else on the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that'd be the action of this council, next item?
That brings us to item number eight.
Pardon? Well, I wanna talk, have Maggie come up, and she can explain whether I do or not. We have the general manager of personnel come up.
That brings us to item number eight, sir.
Okay, item is in front of us now. My understanding is, we did have a public hearing on this already, but we will open it up for twelve minutes, one minute per speaker. The following, please come to the microphone, we have Anna Martinez, Holly Walcott, and Sue Fravens. If I called your name, please come to the microphone. Anna Martinez, Holly Walcott, and Sue Fravens, please come on up.
Good afternoon, Council President Pro Tem Reyes and honorable council members. Many of you around the horseshoe wreck. Many of you around the horseshoe recognize me as one of the Madam Poe clerks. My name is Anna Martinez, and I'm here today to speak in opposition to the proposed proposal regarding Anthem Blue Cross HMO changing their current HMO plan to the new Anthem Select Network. Like Councilmember Rosendale, I too am fighting a battle of my life. On April 16th of this year, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. I know that this proposal affects not only me, but other countless city employees that have chronic or serious medical conditions. Many of them may not be present today because they wish to keep their medical condition private, and I respect them for that. Over the past several months, I have met with oncologists and radiologists and have selected two wonderful specialists that are providing me with the best medical care that they can give me. I've come to establish both a professional and medical relationship with these doctors. If this proposal is approved, these fine specialists will no longer be in the same network that I'm currently enrolled in. If I need emergency care, I have to go to a different hospital where these specialists cannot treat me. I can't afford to change specialists midstream during my treatments. I'm currently in the middle of my chemo sessions. I have three remaining. The week of Christmas, I begin six weeks of radiation treatment, and then back to the chemo center, where I will begin 17 specialized IV treatments every 21 kills, every 21 days to kill a particular aggressive cancer cell that was detected after my surgery. I know this issue is all about saving the city money. For me, it's about saving my life. I thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Anna. My prayers are with you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon. My name is Holly Walcott, and most of you hopefully recognize me as the Executive Officer of the Office of the City Clerk, but I'm here to speak as an employee of the City of Los Angeles. I too fought and won a battle with breast cancer. I'm wearing pink today because of that. In 2006, I was diagnosed with cancer and have been cancer-free for the last five. As Anna says, it's about money, and I respect that. The problem is, it's a lot less expensive to prevent cancer than it is to treat it. In August of this year, I was told I had a mass in my admin that has to be removed that is precancerous, and that if it doesn't get removed, it will turn into cancer. I will go in for my third treatment in next month to get that removed, and the continuity of care is so important. And if you don't know what the continuity, how important the continuity of care is, then you've just never had cancer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Sue Franz. I'm a 29-year employee in the City of Los Angeles. I have always had a PPO. I have never gone out of network, except twice in my 29 years. This year, I too was diagnosed with breast cancer. Under traditional medicine, they told me that I was 48.6% likely to get a cancer recurrence within the next five years. But I had options, and so should the city, the employees of the City of L.A. I went to the UCLA Revlon Breast Cancer Center. They said, rather than look at traditional medicine, look at your tumor and do a diagnosis on a molecular level. Under that basis, they told me that chemotherapy, being costly for healthcare, being costly for me personally, emotionally, physically, they said that chemotherapy was not necessary and would have zero benefit. I moved on to radiation, and as a result of it, I was able to do my radiation treatments after working an entire day. I want to thank the Personnel Committee for recognizing this as an issue, for not accepting the original recommendation to narrow network. I would ask that you look at this, because what they're doing is the $5 million that they talked about in terms of the trust fund is actually coming from funds that were left over on the Anthem Blue Cross, and they gave it to Kaiser in order to subsidize it. They gave it to Kaiser because it's costly. They have increased their overall cost to the City of L.A. by 23%
Thank you, ma'am.
in the last few years.
Thank you.
I would ask that you look at this.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Victor M. Gordo, June McGilneck, and Douglas Sternick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the City Council. I'm here on behalf of the L.A. Coalition of City Unions to say to you, first, working together works. I'd like to thank particularly Maggie Wieland and David Luther for coming up with a creative solution that we could then agree to and put before you. But let's not stop here. This is going to require a side letter agreement with all of the affected labor unions, and we're prepared to do that quickly, because this should not take six months to give effect. You're hearing some stories, we've heard many other stories of people who are directly affected. The first message should be to Anthem, the provider, and say, if you want to be a long-term partner with the City of Los Angeles, then let's start now. Let's shorten the timeframe to give effect to this. Six months is far too long. In that time, people may lose their healthcare, may lose their provider, and not be welcomed back. But also, let's change the system so that the JLMBC, who makes recommendations, who actually crafts solutions, can negotiate with the providers before we have to award the RFP. You may be surprised to know that we can't do that at this time.
Thank you very much. Please give us your name.
My name is June McGilneck. I'm a 16-year employee of the City of Los Angeles. I was raised in this city, and I'm 50 years old. I was schooled here. I wish I was these people talking about my breast cancer. I'm here. I need your attention talking in your meetings. This was my daughter a year ago. This was my 15-year-old a year ago. And now, this is my daughter this year. And when she was diagnosed in December, the little orthopedic doctor we went to told me, I don't know where to send you, but you can go to Cedars or you can go to UCLA. Those are the places that could help you. And we went to Cedars, and they confirmed that she had osteosarcoma, a devastating and aggressive bone cancer. And the doctor there said, we can help you here, but we don't have a pediatric doctor to do this for you. They only have it at UCLA, the only place that they can help save my child's life, and she's responding to chemo, is at UCLA. Mr. Zine knows this. He shaved his head in her honor of all the children with St. Baldur's in March. The children, it should be me, please let it, I don't want it to be you. Please let it not happen to you.
Thank you.
It's my child. Please.
Thank you.
Please consider this.
Thank you very much. Douglas Sternick, Hugo Rosider, and George Anderson, please come on up.
Good afternoon. I'm Douglas Sternick. I'm the Vice President of Managed Care with Cedar Sinai Health System. I wanted to raise two concerns as it relates to the current proposal, specific to the HMO membership. As I understand it today, people who are HMO members will be moved into the narrow network, or if they want to maintain their relationship with Cedars or UCLA, will have to pick the PPO for a period of six months, and then they can go in, back into the larger network. I urge you to consider that six-month time period as an excessive time period. They have transition assistance, which is available, and they could file a grievance, but the grievance only lasts 30 days. The transition assistance is on a case-by-case basis. The concern here would be an unintended consequence of somebody who has to pay a $4,000 annual cost for premium, plus significant deductibles, foregoing care, or believing that they could forego care for a period of time until they can get back with their Cedar Sinai physicians in the HMO. And that could provide significant and negative consequences on their health. Secondly, I would urge you to...
Can you please conclude?
Okay. Secondly, I would definitely urge you to consider, when you launch that larger network, that you do it in such a way that does not provide an undue financial burden on members so that they can access it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please give us your name.
Good morning. I'm Hugo Rosider, Deputy City Attorney. In less than three weeks, due to the efforts of the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee and the Personnel Department, we've made significant changes in the proposal, which is to the betterment of thousands of city employees. We are particularly concerned about this concept of two enrollments. I understand it's logistically difficult, but we believe the numbers are known as to what it will cost, and if we really push and push hard for the next couple of weeks, with the cooperation of the unions that Mr. Gordo has promised, we can eliminate the cost of a second enrollment, which is half a million dollars, and stop everybody from being disrupted of going in and out of HMOs, or maybe even not being able to get in. And I would urge the council to hold this for a week so as to try to allow those efforts to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please give us your name.
I'm George Anderson. I'm Vice President of Major Accounts for HealthNet. We're unique in that we're based here in Woodland Hills, and we employ over 2,500 people and are one of the largest taxpayers within the city. We certainly understand and appreciate the city's challenges around healthcare costs. It's a challenge we deal with every day. Through the RFP process, we believe that HealthNet, as well as some of the other plans, provided alternative solutions that offered access and quality at a more affordable cost. We think that the ad hoc solution being proposed needs to be reconsidered. We ask that the council approve the existing renewal of the plans in play, issue a new RFP within 45 days, and consider a spring 2013 effective date to reduce the duplicate enrollment going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to call up the next group of speakers. Jennifer Ramirez, Adrian Corosani, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, and Annika Cole, please come up to the microphone. Please give us your name.
Hi, Jennifer Ramirez, good morning. You've heard a lot of emotional comments already, and we did have many speakers at the last committee and at the JLMBC, and we thank both groups for listening to the concerns that we all had. I'm a Deputy City Attorney. I've been with the office since 1999. I've been with my doctors since 97, and I was one of those that spoke. Fortunately for me at this time, myself and my family don't have a traumatic condition or a long care condition, but our doctors and our healthcare are important to us. Many of us were concerned about the way in which we found out about the changes to our healthcare, which impact all of us and our families and our dependents. We think that in the future, we hope our concerns have been noted and that we will get better notice. For example, city attorneys are not represented on the JLMBC. We are not one of those groups that's part of that, so we'd ask for better notice the next time around. We do think that the proposed modifications would allow us to keep our providers. However, the cost could be rather exorbitant for people who have to switch from HMO to PPO, or people within those groups. So we thank you to have your concern with this issue, but we think some more thought needs to be done.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker?
Good afternoon. Adrian Corosani, City Attorney. I am grateful for the opportunity to be heard here today, and I am grateful for the attention the PAWS committee gave to this issue. I am concerned at the lack of clarity that remains, namely, what Jennifer referenced. Those of us who are on the HMO now will have to switch to the PPO for six months. I haven't heard a guarantee that we'll be able to get back into our HMO and seen by the same doctors. My understanding is that that's an issue the doctors' group gets to decide, and that our health provider can't guarantee that. That can be financially devastating for families. According to the report that you'll be hearing today, we're merely 4% of the city. But to our families, we are providers, caretakers, and guardians. This is not a solely economical issue. You've heard some of the stories today. There were many more at committee. We can't just exhaust appeals while we're dealing with our family's health issues. This is a moral issue. Real families with real health concerns are being affected. Please don't sacrifice a few of us because it's easy. Please do what's right for our families and for the city's family. We're depending on you as our families are depending on us. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Annika Cole, and I come to you in various capacities. I am a member of the Union Board for MOU 29, and I'm the Criminal Director. But I want to talk to you about some other hats I wear. Perhaps the most important hats that I wear are as a mother and as a wife. I'm the wife of Brent Honorway, who's been with LAPD for 24 years. He has given his heart and soul to protect the citizens of the city, and I am honored to be his wife. And one of our goals as a family is to grow our family. We have a beautiful daughter, but I'm an older woman, and we need the specialist that's helping us do that, that only has privileges at Cedar Sinai. This person has been my doctor since I've been with the city, and we believe that he has our trust and confidence and will help us reach our goal. Please don't take that doctor away from us. We've given you our hearts. Please help us grow our family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have several members on the queue. Consumer Coretts? Would you prefer the presentation first, or would you like to speak to the issue?
Well, I guess I'd like to speak to the issue first, and then
Okay.
maybe we can have a presentation. The basic problem is that there was a decision made to alter our health plans in such a way as to save $6 million that was budgeted, but without a lot of involvement by the council in awareness. And so it was brought to us as a plan that would eliminate the ability for doctors of privileges at some significant hospitals, probably most notably Cedars and UCLA, to be eliminated from that plan. This would be obviously a dramatic impact on my district geographically, because those are really the two hospitals that virtually everyone utilizes on the west side of Los Angeles and in Council District 5, or people that, access specialists that really only can be found at UCLA or Cedars. And so this would have a very dramatic impact, although on a small percentage of the overall population of our employees. We determined this really wasn't an appropriate way to deal with it, to endanger the health of a few percent of our employees to save money for the group overall. And so we sent that back to be negotiated. I think we've made some significant progress, although our staff will speak to that. I'm still concerned that a six-month period where people will not be able to stay on their original HMO will endanger continuity of care. I've talked to some physicians, particularly Dan Stone of Cedar Sinai Health Associates, who fear that some of their patients that are not in the most serious positions, they're not being treated with chemotherapy, but perhaps they're dealing with diabetic complications that the health plan typically will deny some of those. And so I'm concerned about continuity of care and finding a way to broaden what they will accept so that people aren't endangering their health in trying to avoid accessing care until they are reinstated on their HMO. I also think that six months is an overly long period. I believe with aggressive work on everybody's part, and again, I've talked to some experts on this, that it could be done in three months, and it should be done in three months. So those are a couple of my concerns, but I think we're moving in the right direction. I think we absolutely can't move in the wrong direction and danger the health of some of our employees. So with that, I'd ask that we have staff come up and walk us through where we are now on this current proposal.
Consumer Coretts, before you sit down, I'd like to ask, given the in-depth analysis, what is your recommendation to this council?
I'm still not entirely sure, but I would recommend that as we attempt to renegotiate this and get back on a health plan that covers Cedar Sinai and UCLA coverage, that we try to do that in a three-month period, and that we get a clearer picture and a more generous picture of the case-by-case continuity of care, so that we don't wind up with people with somewhat serious health conditions having to try and avoid accessing care, which winds up damaging their health and probably costs the city money in the long run. So those are a couple of thoughts I have, but I'd really like to have staff come up and speak to this item.
Thank you.
Where exactly we are in the process.
I appreciate that insight. Can we have the presentation, please, from the appropriate staff? Just come on up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is David Luther from the Personnel Department. To my right is Alex Bascas, the Chief of our Employee Benefits Division, and then, of course, Maggie Whalen and Miguel Santana. During our presentation—you've already heard mention of the term JL MBC, and I just wanted to make sure everybody really was aware of what the JL MBC was. The JL MBC is the Joint Labor Management Benefits Committee. It was created in 1989 through a special management labor MOU to review and recommend benefits, changes, and proposals. It consists of 10 members, five from management, five from labor. The management quorum includes the CAO, the general manager of the Personnel Department, and three other general managers or assistant general managers. The five labor members are essentially the heads of ASME, SEIU, EAA, Launa, and the Building Trades Council. And what we're presenting today represents the collective decision of the JL MBC as a whole. The Personnel Department's role is to administer the benefits programs, but again, just to make sure it's clear, the JL MBC is the decider in what is recommended to council for plan design. I did want to give just a quick—before I turn it over to Alex—to maybe discuss in a little more detail of what we're proposing, just the fiscal context of what we were facing when we began deliberations on Plan Year 2013. We are all aware that the city has a deficit of over $200 million in 2013-14. We were aware that if no plan design changes were made at all by the JL MBC, we just simply renewed the plans that we had. The cost increase was $25 million. We also were aware that the adopted budget included $6 million in benefits reduction target for us to meet, and an instruction from council to achieve structural healthcare plan design changes. This is the situation that JL MBC has been in for several years because of the city's fiscal crisis. In Plan Year 2011, we achieved 9.2 million in savings, mostly by raising co-pays on the entire city civilian population. In Plan Year 2012, we achieved 8.8 million in savings. The plan design that we're recommending today would save 12 to 13 million in savings. In addition, just to close, I would add that the CAO has negotiated with three additional groups in Plan Year 2013 to contribute 5% of their pay for the medical premium costs. And these groups are the non-reps—the nonrepresented employees, the management attorneys, and the poor police. But still, even with that, including EAA, who is already contributing 5%, 75% of the civilian employees do not pay a portion of the medical premium. Overall, the city still pays about 98% of the medical plan cost. I'll turn it over to Alex. We've distributed a PowerPoint handout so that you can follow along. It's a pretty complicated subject, so Alex can kind of walk you through the plan design changes.
Good afternoon. So I'm going to start on page 2 of the PowerPoint handout that we provided. As David indicated, initially, what the JL MBC was facing was plan costs for the medical portion that would have increased costs by $25 million. The JL MBC considered a variety of different plan design options. Ultimately, what they initially recommended was implementing a narrow network with Blue Cross for both the HMO and the PPO plan. And basically, what a narrow network is, is a smaller—a more narrow group of network providers. And as indicated previously, what that means is that some providers will not be considered in network, UCLA and Cedars being one of the major groups that won't be in network. After—this went to Personnel Committee, and based on concerns from employees, the Personnel Committee requested the JL MBC to reconsider, and specifically to reconsider adding a full network for the PPO plan. So the JL MBC met a couple times, and they came up with an alternative recommendation, which is what is before you, and basically to move forward with a narrow network for the HMO plan and a full network for the PPO plan. In addition, Blue Cross offered to provide the city with $250,000, which would cover part of the lost savings by going back out to a full PPO network. And the city, through our budget process, will try to come up with the additional $250,000 in lost savings as well. On page 3, there's basically a breakdown of the medical premium costs, and as you can see, what we did was break it down by plan type—the Blue Cross, HMO, PPO, and the Kaiser Plan. And again, this just illustrates in a little bit more detail the incremental costs that the city was facing, and with the proposed plan, the incremental costs will be reduced by $8.2 million. On page 4, this is basically just a summary of the incremental costs for the medical plans. On an annual basis, with this proposed plan, the medical costs will increase about 7.2%, which is about $17 million. Again, this is going to save approximately $8.2 million over the status quo. Specifically, the Kaiser costs are going up by 12.2%, and the Anthem HMO plan costs are going to be mitigated entirely and actually going down slightly. And the Anthem PPO costs are going to go up by 8.8%. So basically, what is before you is the proposal to change the Anthem Blue Cross HMO plan to a narrow network effective January 1, 2013. There will be no changes to the Anthem PPO plan. It'll continue to be a full network, and there'll be no changes to co-pays and deductibles for either the HMO, Blue Cross plan, the PPO plan, or the Kaiser plan. In terms of impact on employees, on page 6, there's a chart there that illustrates the impact on the employees. Now, obviously, the most impacted employees are going to be those in the HMO plan who will have to change their primary care physician. And we're estimating that that's going to be approximately 872 employees that will be impacted, which means that approximately 96% of the employees will not have to change their primary care physicians. The options for those employees that are impacted is that they will either have to pick another primary care physician or elect to go into another plan, such as the Kaiser or the PPO plan. For those employees that are currently undergoing treatment or who meet a certain criteria, they will be eligible for transition care assistance, which basically means that they can continue care under their current provider up to six months. And if—for example, if there are children under 36 months, or an employee is pregnant, or employee is undergoing care for cancer treatment, they can qualify for transition assistance to continue their care, as I indicated. The other option that the JL MBC is also proposing is that effective July 1, 2013, we offer employees another HMO program. This is basically a full network that will have basically Cedars and UCLA providers, and the cost of that plan will be borne by the employees. Of course, this is subject also to an employee cost-sharing component that is—will be part of the collective bargaining process. At this point, if there's any questions?
Okay. Any other—what you said? Is that all the material you have? All right. So let's move to the speaker queue. Consulme Garcetti, then Consulme Zine.
Thank you. We spoke a little bit on Friday, myself and Personnel Department. I was just wondering if you could say it on the record, too. For those folks that are in the middle of treatment, are they able to retain their medical care while this is going through? Some of the examples we had of folks coming through saying that they were in the midst of treatment, have these relationships with—for their family, and if so, for how long? And how does that process work?
Sure. We also have representatives from Blue Cross, but basically, yes, if an employee is undergoing treatment, what we're asking is that they contact Blue Cross now, and they can apply for the transition care program. They will be contacted within 24 hours of their application, notified that their application is being processed. And basically, anyone who meets the criteria will be allowed to continue treatment up to six months. The goal is to try to get employees continue treatment with their provider and not disrupt that treatment. There are certain conditions that automatically will qualify, as I indicated. Those employees that are pregnant, children under 36 months, and employees currently undergoing treatment for a serious medical condition such as cancer.
And at the end of the six months, then, you're assuming we're back to a place where hopeful, but there's no guarantee that at the end of the six months we have HMO coverage, or you're asking them to go to the PPO to continue?
So at this point, for employees who want to continue—I want a guarantee of continued care with their medical provider, their best option is to go to the PPO plan, so they can get that treatment on an in-network basis. However, if the employee is in the HMO plan and they want to go through a transition assistance, they can also opt for that. And then in July, when we offer the other HMO program, they can enroll in that plan.
The narrow one? So it may not be their doctor—the current doctors?
In July, we'll have the both HMOs side by side, a narrow HMO and a HMO plus, if you will, so employees will be able to enroll in either.
Presumably a higher level than what they'd be paying now for that HMO plus plan?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Consulme Zine, and then, Consulme Parks.
It's like a roulette wheel. You're healthy today, and like my colleague Bill Rosendahl, he comes down with cancer. So the city employees that have come before us today have the roulette wheel not in their favor because they've been stricken with cancer, and that relationship with their doctor is critical. And I understand we have to save money, but there has to be some humanitarian aspect and some caring for our fellow human being, our fellow city employees. The concern I have, the lack of notice when the change took place—and I serve on the committee with Mr. Coretts—and the first meeting we had, you've got very professional, educated, dedicated city employees who were ballistic because of what was happening to them. They were ballistic. We came back, and they were calmer the second time. But we're talking about dedicated people. One lady, 29 years of service, and it offends me and them that we're like turning our back on them because of the dollar. And what I really find outrageous is the Kaiser plan is more expensive than the other plans. That I find totally outrageous. And when I asked the representative from the insurance company, "Why are our rates so high?" Well, we're making up for the people that aren't paying. So basically, insurance companies are taking advantage of the city of Los Angeles and taxpayers to make up for those people that don't have insurance and aren't paying, which is a burden to the taxpayers and a slap in the face of the dedicated employees we have. So it really—and Anna, who sits up here, who's here today, who's going through cancer treatment—I remember when she came down with cancer, and she told me that she came down with cancer. Now she's going through therapy, and she's here today. This just offends me personally, because maybe the roulette wheel will hit me next week. Maybe it'll hit one of you next week. And you need that care and that treatment for yourself, for your family, to survive. And I understand the dollar aspect, but I think we're forgetting the human aspect that we're talking about with the people that are here pleading their case. And why is it when we did this process, it was a last minute? They weren't notified, as they should have been notified. At least, that's what they testified in committee. And all of a sudden now, we're making some modifications and changes which affect their lives, their livelihood. The fact that this is a deadly illness—cancer is a deadly illness—and they're pleading to us that we do something to help it. And I've been with the city for 44 years, 44 years, and thank God I'm still healthy. But during that period of time, if something were to happen, I'd know I have insurance, and I know I'd have the safeguard. I think that what we're doing—if you're at UCLA or Cedars—you know, you're going to be kind of out of luck. You've got to go to someplace else. And that doesn't work well with those that have the relationship with their doctors. And some of the folks have testified here—I know the HIPAA standard, you're not supposed to tell about medical—I didn't know that some of these folks had cancer, and they'd been very positive in their recovery and very positive in saying, "We've got a problem."
Consulme Zine?
I don't like what we're doing with it. I think what we're doing is a disservice to the people, and I think the insurance companies are screwing us and the taxpayers of Los Angeles with the rates.
Thank you, Consulme.
And then one more thing—just one more thing, Mr. Reyes. Anthem Blue Cross, Anthem—somehow—I understand they're supposed to save us a fortune, but somehow they were excluded in the process. So I have some other questions on that, and why they were going to save us money and somehow they got excluded in this process.
Can you push the button again?
That the Anthem plan—I'm sorry, Health Net. Health Net, I'm sorry, Health Net, not Anthem.
Okay.
That Health Net. I've got some more questions, but I'm very emotional about this because I know these people personally, and I see what they're going through. When I see Anna up here, voting clerk, 14 eyes, and now she's recovering from cancer, going through therapy, that touches me in the heart to say we've got to do better than what we're doing for these people.
Thank you, Consulme Zine. Consulme Parks, then Consulme Cocorion.
Thank you very much. I'd just like a couple of questions to clear up. In dealing with the HMO, we're saying people have the ability to move to a PPO for six months. Do they have the ability to maintain their doctors—their current doctors—if they make that move? So they can go to the PPO and maintain their doctors?
Yes.
Then the other issue is if we're going to create a new HMO plan that has the full coverage at some point, and that's in the workings, then what's the difference of the plan you're going to create with full coverage and the one you are canceling out and going to a narrow coverage?
Yeah. Mr. Parks, at JL MBC, there was a quantum shift in thinking. The CAO has basically, for years, been saying that we have excellent benefits, and to keep those benefits with the cost increases that we have, employees are going to have to pay a share.
Okay, so the new one will be paid in total by the employee?
The difference between the cost of the narrow network and the new plan that we're in the process of designing, the intent is that it would be paid by the employees, subject to meet and confirm negotiations.
I mean, total? Total cost?
That is the difficulty. There's been a lot of talk about moving forward as fast as possible, but there are many unknowns, and that's one of the big unknowns, which is that all has to be negotiated with the unions. We cannot say today what the premium cost will be and how much the employees will be asked to pay.
It would be the difference between the subsidy and the additional cost is what the employee would need to pick up.
Okay, and this is in addition to what we just add, what, 4% for employees to then pay for their medical upon retirement?
Most employees are not paying an additional—or are not paying toward the subsidy.
What I'm saying—but didn't we just add something to the cost by them paying a stipend for their medical upon retirement?
Yes.
And how much is that?
It was—I actually like Miguel to answer that, but I believe it was 2% or 4% of pay.
Miguel, what did we add to the employees' costs to pay for their medical upon retirement?
I'm sorry.
What did we add to the employee cost that they pay for their medical upon retirement? Is it 4%?
Yes. Most city employees—not all, but most—have agreed to pay 4% of their salary so that they could have retiree healthcare for themselves and their spouse or partner upon retirement.
Consulme Parks, can I ask you to push the button again?
Okay.
Or do you want to close? Do you have one more question, sir? Okay. Consulme Cocorion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm—obviously—well, let me—you know, I think the context of this, first of all, should probably be repeated. It was touched upon by Mr. Zine, but the reason that we're having this discussion is because of the outrageous and dramatic spiking of healthcare costs that happen each and every year, when even the companies that we've been doing business with for a long period of time, and hopefully will continue to do business with in the future, see fit to give us dramatic price increases with each and every year. And so—I mean, that's really what's driving this, is the outrageous increases in healthcare costs generally. costs generally. That being said, it's clear that we have to find ways to reduce the impact of those increases in order to have a sustainable healthcare system for all of our employees. And there's only a limited number of ways that you can do that. You can have a higher contribution, share of contribution from the employees themselves, you can pay more out of the general fund, you can hopefully get some cost reductions from the providers. But I'm especially concerned with what's before us today, about the continuity of care issue that was raised by many of the members, many of our employees, and Mr. Garcetti touched upon it as well. And I, as I understand it, there would be an option for all employees to be able to retain their current provider, their current physician. But what we haven't really talked about is what will be the individual financial impact on that employee in doing so. So if they go, for example, from the HMO to a PPO that includes their physician, or if they participate in this transitional program, and by the way, I'm not really sure of the details of this transitional program. There's an application process, there's presumably some kind of an approval process where the provider might or might not accept them into the transitional program. What are the details of that? How does that work? How do you actually get into that transitional program as opposed to the PPO? What are the consequences if the provider decides not to include that patient's physician within the transitional program? And then what are the costs to the individual employee of each of those options, whether shifting from HMO to PPO or going through the transitional plan during that six-month period?
Councilman, I think it's timely that the representative from Blue Cross come forward and explain the transitional plan.
Great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Camilla Watt. I'm head of strategic accounts with responsibility for the city of LA for Anthem Blue Cross. It is our absolute goal to assist employees and their dependents who are impacted by this switch from our full network to the narrow network, where continuity of care issues exist. We have a transition assistance program designed to do just that. Leave those members, impacted members, with their current provider until it is safe and medically appropriate to move their care to a provider in the narrower network. Conditions that could be eligible for transition assistance, but again, on a case-by-case basis, would be people in active treatment for an acute condition, people who are in active treatment for a serious medical condition, people who are in an active course of treatment for any behavioral health condition, pregnant women regardless of trimester, including postpartum care, anyone who has a terminal illness, and newborn care for a child who is three years old or younger. And again, there's no limit on the amount of time they can stay with a provider if it is not safe or medically appropriate to move that employee or their dependents from that provider's care.
Mr. President, if I may, just ask a follow-up on that point. So the eligibility determination of whether it is a qualifying condition is one made by the provider?
It's made by our nurses and physicians in transition assistance.
And so if there's denial, and there's a disagreement between the provider and the patient, how is that disagreement resolved? What's the recourse for the patient? And then likewise, on the determination of when the period of medical eligibility, if you will, when it's, when that period ends in which it is no longer deemed medically unsafe to transfer to a different provider, I think was the language that you used, that determination also has to be made by the provider, and presumably there will be some disagreements with the patient then as well. So in those two, those two decision points, whether they're eligible and how long they remain eligible for transitional care, how are disagreements resolved, and what rights does the patient have then?
Okay, that's a great question. In the event that there is a disagreement, and let me make it clear that our transition assistance team does work with the patient's current provider, as well as your employee or dependent that is affected, to really understand, you know, what their situation is. But should there be, you know, an employee or a dependent that disagrees with the decision made by that team, it would go to our grievance department, and the reason there's a separate department is those impacted employees would have a third-party team that had nothing to do with the original decision assist them with that grievance. Should that grievance not be resolved to the member's satisfaction, or within 30 days, they also have a right to elevate it to the Department of Managed Healthcare.
Okay. I'd also add that the JLBC has formed an ad hoc committee on the transition, so it's, the city will be monitoring the transition process and will be updated by Blue Cross on the number of appeals and the disposition of the appeals as well.
We will be making outbound calls to everyone that we know today is affected by a condition that could qualify for a transition assistance, so that we can assist them in making the best decision regarding their health plan.
Great.
Push your button again.
Yeah, me too.
Mr. Englander.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions on the projected cost savings as it relates to, it says in the 12-month period, it's estimated to be approximately up to $13 million, $12.5 million.
That's correct.
So is that, if we took the, I'm trying to figure out where the actual savings is determined. If you've got the 2,200 or so on UCLA and Cedars, is that about, what was the number?
It's actually, the disruption number, in terms of the number of employees that will have to elect a new primary care physician is about 800.
800, but then how many are on UCLA and Cedars as well, on top of that?
The number of employees and dependents at Cedars is 984, and for UCLA, 987.
2,200. So with that, let's assume for one second that every, have we done, well, let me ask a question. Have we done any outreach to them, finding out where they would end up? Like where they would, who they would select? Do we know where they're going to go to?
What we have done is we, Blue Cross has sent out letters to these employees and notified them that their doctors are not in-network. What we've also asked them to do is to contact Blue Cross directly if they need assistance in selecting a new primary care physician.
Would each one of them have the option to select, for example, Kaiser, if they wanted to?
Yes, they could select either the Kaiser plan during the open enrollment period, or they can elect to go into the Anthem PPO plan.
But we're in open enrollment right now, so we'd have to reopen the enrollment after we pass this again.
Well, actually, we're in open enrollment right now. We're actually extending open enrollment till November 15th.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be aware, a lot of people may or may not really be aware, quite frankly, until this open enrollment, even after the extension is expired.
Right.
Then we'd have to reopen it again.
What we're, what we're planning on doing is, after council makes a decision, we will notify employees in writing, email blasts, et cetera.
Right. But to open it again is a cost of how much?
Conducting a full, another open enrollment is approximately $500,000.
So that's $500,000 off the $13 million savings. If every one of these 2,200 went to Kaiser, let's just make the worst-case scenario example, not the Kaiser's worst-case scenario, because I'm going to get my phone calls and letters now from Kaiser. But cost-wise, the highest cost, if every one of these, under that scenario, went to Kaiser, for example, that would not only eat up the proposed savings, but then actually cost additional money, wouldn't it?
Well, it's hard to predict. Basically, the Kaiser plan is about $100 more a month per employee.
It says here it's about 12% more, per employee plus per dependent. So if every one of these actually went towards the Kaiser plan, not only would we eat up our savings that we're hoping for, it costs us $500,000 for the open enrollment, and then we still have the network plus, let me come back to that.
Councilor, you, push your button again, please. You're over.
Can I ask one more real quick question? Or should I push my button again, and then? Okay, real quick, on the qualified local business as well, for the benefit of getting that 8% for local business preference, was that considered under this? Because I believe that Mr. Zine brought up the Health Net issue in their local company as well. Were they given the 8%? Or was anybody given the 8% under the qualified bid?
Yeah, I, we got the benefit of the Health Net letter this morning, so we have not had a chance to review it closely, but the RFP process is completed. If Health Net is raising objection to the RFP process.
They didn't bring this up. I'm asking if any of the bidders got the 8% preferential bid for being a local bidder?
The answer is, this was not included in the RFP.
It's not part of the RFP, it's part of the evaluation process in the city.
Yeah.
That's passed by ordinance by this body.
Yeah, we were advised when we prepared the RFP by the Bureau of Contract Administration that the requirements did not apply because they had not promulgated the regulations. Now, that advice, as we understand it, turned out to be incorrect. We did meet with the mayor's office, and it was their understanding. This contract was exempt that, under the program that you're mentioning, that that was to apply to, basically a small business program that would apply to contracts under $1 million.
I've got the copy of the ordinance right here, and there's no dollar value associated with the actual ordinance under local preference at all.
We're going, again, we're going, again, by the advice of the mayor's office. It is important to note, had the ordinance actually been applied to this RFP, both Anthem Blue Cross and Health Net would have both received the preference.
Councilor Englander, please.
Okay, thank you.
Please push the button again, yes. Councilor Perry?
So we find ourselves in a sea of uncertainty with our employees, and I want to know from the city's perspective, why they think that employees won't rush to go to Kaiser or whatever because they're going to be concerned with being in an uncertain status. We've got this mid-year enrollment upon us now, an RFP coming out to revise the programs next year. And I'd like to know, I'm just going to save both questions, so you can just talk for the rest of the time that I have, the cost to the cities, to the city, if our employees select Kaiser or PPO to avoid the uncertainty. And then the second part of that question is, what benchmarks are you looking at for assurances that the city will realize cost savings by implementing the Anthem HMO narrow network?
So with regard to the assurances that we're going to save with the narrow network, the narrow network basically lowered the premium costs. So for employees that are enrolled in the Anthem HMO plan, the premium rates are fixed based on the rates that were finally negotiated for that plan. So they're about $100 per month less expensive than the Kaiser plan. With respect to the number of employees electing a different plan during the open enrollment process, it is correct, employees can enroll in either medical plan. The Kaiser/Blue Cross plans, it's up to them. We won't know until after open enrollment closes whether or not employees actually shift. However, our experience is, you know, Kaiser employees, those enrolled in that plan are basically dedicated to that plan. Those employees that are in the Blue Cross plans prefer those plans. We don't see a lot of shifts in enrollment between those two plans. I don't anticipate that there will be a significant migration to Kaiser. I think employees will either choose to stay in the HMO plan or the PPO plan.
Thank you. Next speaker, Councilor Alarcon, then Councilor Labange.
How narrow is the narrow network?
It is still a sizable network. The most notable group.
How big is the full network now?
Well, this is the list.
How many?
Uh, one, two, three.
Okay, I want to know what's the difference between the narrow network and the full network?
There are approximately 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 groups, the most notable being UCLA and Cedars, that are not in the full network.
In terms of the number of physicians, nine out of 10 doctors that are in the narrow network, I mean, in the, nine, let me try that again, nine out of 10 doctors are in the narrow network that are in the full network.
Nine out of 10 doctors. Okay, are there, okay, so the cost of moving from a family HMO to a family PPO is how much?
So there are several, there are a couple of parts to the cost, but basically, the first is the premium cost. So if someone is moving from the HMO plan, they're currently not paying towards the premium cost, and if they move to the PPO plan, the monthly cost would be $316.
How much?
$316.
$316 a month?
That would be the employee cost, yes.
So they're going from paying zero, if they switch to the PPO, they pay $316 a month?
That's correct.
Why would they take that option?
They would take that option if they want to assure that they all have access to the providers that are not in the narrow network, such as Cedars.
So this, this plan sounds a little discriminatory against kids.
Well, let me point out that if you're, there are four tiers in terms of the rates. If you're employee-only, there are no.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm saying family.
Right, so I wanted to just point out that.
So it would have an effect on those, a greater effect on those employees that have families?
Right, but if you're an employee with children, you will have no.
Which would be an employee that has a family, right?
Right. You can be employee and family, which means an employee, spouse, and family, they will have 316, a premium cost of 316 a month. If they are just employee and children, they will have no premium cost in the PPO plan.
I'm sorry, what? They're going from an HMO family to a PPO family, and there's no cost?
If, there are four tiers in terms of the premium rates. If an employee has, is employee and children, meaning it's an employee and maybe two children, there are no premium costs under the HMO.
That's assuming their spouse isn't involved. So when you say, the distinction between children and family is, one has a spouse.
That's right.
So if they have a spouse and children, they get discriminated against?
They have a premium cost.
They have a very high premium cost, like 300, from 0 to 300.
Councilor, if you can push the button.
And their option is to go to a narrow network. What, and we have, nobody has spoken to the guarantees to get back into the original full network. Is the full network going to remain the same on July 1st?
That is our intent to try to negotiate that, but there may be some.
So there's no guarantees that their doctor could even be in the full network?
Our intent would be to try to restore the full network.
Well, how come you guys don't say that? I mean, that's not fair, guys. Come on. You guys got to tell us that as we're making that consideration, because it sounds like the full network is the full network.
The only reason I hesitate, sir, is because the cost of the premium is going to be something that employees are concerned about. So our efforts will be to, if you would like us to basically cost out just restoration of the full network, we can do that. That's not a problem. Our concern is just, we want to present the JLBC.
No, what it says here, what it says here is a full network option, but it doesn't say that the full network may not be the same full network. That's not fair. That's not right.
If you wish us to commit to that, we will do that. But again, our only reason we hesitated at all is, we have to come up with a plan that is acceptable to the employees and to the unions.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker, Councilor Labange and Councilor Coretts.
Thank you. Does anyone talk to the county of Los Angeles? Because the county of Los Angeles is a like government. Do they have any problem like this, that we're experienced on this?
I think the county is in a similar situation as the city, and they're trying to get their costs down. But they do have an entirely different benefits program than what the city offers.
And this, but also, this is a kind of, in my time, I don't remember something that's critical like this, that had a front page story in The Times, like an earthquake, not a 10.0 earthquake, but a, you know, a 4.2.
Well, I think, as David testified earlier, this is a significant change to how we administer benefits.
I understand that. Now, the representative from Blue Cross, thank you. The issue is, many people are in a challenge right now. They still stay, their system doesn't change at all. You mentioned a lot of categories of people with a variety of illnesses that they wouldn't have to change, like. have to change, like the continuity of care.
I can't say that they wouldn't change, we evaluate these cases.
I can't hear you, just open it up a little.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't say that they would not need to change. I can tell you, they won't be required to change if it's not safe or medically appropriate, and...
All right.
I would encourage them, and we've passed out materials, and we continue to educate, and we will be calling all of them, to contact transition assistance so that they can make a determination...
If I'm going under chemotherapy right now, like some of our employees are, will they even have to think about this because they're in the fight of their lives? Will they have to think about this, or are they going to be passed to let them know, "We're going to take care of you all the way"? You're in the process, that's the key that I want to get across. The people who are in it right now have the challenge.
Okay, if they're in a round of chemotherapy, they would...
No, no, if they're in, they're in the battle right now.
Then that's a decision that I have to leave to transition assistance, I'm not in their short position.
But let me ask you a question for personnel or CEO, can we identify someone in personnel? And we used to, and Maggie, I know we were there together when we had our own city hospitals and we did all this stuff, we had our own doctors, it's a different time now, it's a change. Can anybody be identified and loaned to the Personnel Department or to the CEO's office or wherever to help and protect those who are in the battle of their lives right now and having to go through this? Having experienced my wife and her battle, it's very traumatizing to families, and they're in it now. I'm not talking about, every day's a blessing, you wake up and you got a challenge, and can we identify someone to help and guide, so they don't have to punch a bunch of numbers? Because we're a big client to a variety of healthcare industry people, and we want to make sure we get the best service for our employees. This is my question, Mr. CEO or Ms. Welling.
Counselor Bennett, we are, as an employer, there is a medical information that we are not allowed to have, and so consequently, the number of people who have testified, have testified as to their own condition, and they are certainly free to do that, but as the employer, it would not be appropriate for us to be working directly with the employees and gathering this medical information.
No, I don't want the information, that's it, they're trying to call Blue Cross, like on the 8th floor, you help people, and you say, "That's all, I want to connect it, you deal with it, I just want the connection made, I don't want them to have an extra hassle in their, in their battles."
We understand, we will do everything that we can do to ease the transition for our employees.
Counselor Labange, can you please push the button again?
No, I'm complete.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your patience. Counselor Corretts and Counselor Zine.
Yeah, we had it mentioned earlier by a couple of the employees that are involved in trying to work this out, that it would be helpful to hold this item for a week or two and continue to try and negotiate. I wonder if one or two of them could come forward and speak to why this would be valuable and what we're trying to accomplish.
Members of the Council, Hugo Rossetti, again, as I suggested earlier, I believe that the financial aspects of maintaining the current HMO, those numbers are known to the Personnel Department and the Benefits Department, and the only real issue is a negotiation with the unions as to whether, as to what the price of admission would be to maintain the traditional HMO. And I think Mr. Gordo, who's also here, spoke to the fact that he would use his good offices with the unions to try and accomplish this very quickly. The point, of course, is that it eliminates all the concerns arising from disruption, all the concerns about maintaining care, et cetera, and eliminates the extra half-million-dollar cost. I realize that that's an enormous push, but seems to me like it might be worth trying.
Thank you for that, and Counselor Corretts, if I just may, we have about 60 people on the queue, just want to give you a heads up, so, Counselor Corretts.
So, the thought, I believe, would be that we extend the open enrollment period by a couple of weeks. We work to negotiate this quickly, and we don't have to reopen it in July, we don't have to have this period of lack of continuity of care. So, the question for Personnel is, do we think there is any possibility we could make this happen with the kind of cooperation that was spoken of from our labor union partners?
I think it might be more appropriate for the CEO to address whether or not there, it's feasible that they were going to have a, negotiate the letter of intent with the unions about what the subsidy is going to be.
That's, I mean, we could meet as soon as possible to try and negotiate that. I think the question specifically is, I know that the Personnel Department has extended the enrollment period for two weeks. I think what's being asked is if you could extend it for an additional two weeks, so it'll be one-month extension beyond what we have now. Just to put this in context, we're currently in the enrollment period now, and our employees do not know what options they have to enroll in. So, as a result, the Personnel Department extended it for two weeks, so the question is, can it be done for another two?
Okay. We have next, Counselor Corretts, will we find?
Well, yes.
Okay, our next speaker. So, was the question answered?
No. Well, I guess the question, whether it could be done, the question was framed, the question is, can we add a couple of weeks, and do we think we could resolve this all in that time so we could avoid all of the problems that we've been talking about? And if not, could we move it to an April 1, July, open enrollment rather than July open enrollment, so the problems would be greatly minimized?
Ms. Welling, can you give us a yes?
One of the problems that we have is, we have open enrollment, but employees don't know what they're enrolling in because we have not, we do not have the details. This deal was just proposed and struck a week ago, so we are attempting to play catch-up. We should have finished this process some time ago, but because of issues that occurred, we weren't able to. This is something that affects the Personnel Department greatly, it affects our workforce tremendously. We are trying to get this done as quickly as possible. I would like to hear from Alex to see what her point of view is, but this is not for lack of trying.
I appreciate that very much, please.
So, one of the, the two pieces of information that we need are basically what the premiums are going to be for this new HMO plus, and what the subsidy is going to be. So, and that's the information employees need to have to be able to make their benefit elections. We don't have that information initially. When Anthem provided a proposal, the premium rates for a side-by-side HMO would have provided a premium rates at 40 or 50% higher than the current ones. We don't think that that's going to be a sustainable plan, that's why we need the time to bring those rates back to the JLBC and give them some options for how to address those premium rates and creating something that's a viable plan.
Counselor Weston, for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. You know, first thing I want to do is let all of you know how much I appreciate all of the hard work, very difficult work, challenging work where it relates to this issue. But I have come, members, to the conclusion during this debate that we must burden you even more and delay this for the two weeks that Mr. Corretts requested. This issue is too emotional for us, I think, to vote on right now. So, Mr. Corretts, what I would like for you to do is to have another hearing after we've given them additional time. You do it quickly, bring it back to us, and at that point in time, members, I promise you, we're going to have to take a tough vote. But I do not believe that our comfort level as a group today is elevated to do that. And what I don't want to do where it relates to Maggie, you and Miguel, I'm pretty good at counting the votes, I'm really having difficulty in handicapping this one. So, if you were not to get the votes, what position would that put you in? Would that mean we'd have to go back to the old way of doing things, or?
Well, I think that there's probably two impacts that I can think of off the top of my head. One is that, you know, obviously, the savings would not be there from implementing the narrow network, and that's obviously the council's decision. The second issue to bring up, though, would be the first time that council overruled the decision of the JLBC, and since 1989, that hasn't happened, and it does raise the question, sir, if that's the role that council wants to play. If, in fact, that is going to happen, in some respects, we don't need a JLBC, we can just report to council, and council can make a decision.
Well, things happen, you know, the USC Trojans were supposed to go undefeated, and they lost like in the third game, so things do happen. But, members, what I suggest we do is that we table this today. Continue it for two weeks. Before the two weeks is over, Mr. Corretts, you have another hearing, and, members, what I will do at that hearing with the authority given to me by you, if there is a desire by some other members, Mr. Corretts, I will expand for that one hearing, your committee, if you like, just so that we can get input from a larger number of members on this council. And so, if somebody has a desire to join this expanded committee for this one hearing, you should let me know. I am going to make a dear friend upset because I'm going to request that Mr. Krikorian, who has not a whole lot of work to do, but I'm going to request that Mr. Krikorian sit on that expanded committee with Mr. Corretts. I think that's in importance, but Mr. Corretts, it's your issue, it's your baby, and we will rely on your judgment to guide us. I mean, you're the chair of that committee for a reason, and we will be looking to you. So, with that said, Mr. Reyes, and if everyone else that's on the queue, could we, could you just save that for our next discussion, or must you continue?
So...
Because what we can do is, we can send them back to work. Mr. Corretts?
Counselor President, so we have a formal motion to continue this item?
Do I need a formal motion?
Yes, we need a formal motion.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Who's on the queue?
Counselor Zine, I mean, I'm sorry.
And who else?
You have Counselor Zine, Counselor Parks, Counselor Krikorian, Counselor Englander, Counselor Alarcon, Counselor Corretts. So, you got a good, solid six. Mr. Parks?
Yeah, I just have one question, I'm carrying over from a prior question. If the information you were guided by, by the mayor's office and misinterpretation of the ordinance didn't allow people to bid on the RFP, does that put the whole thing in jeopardy?
May I clear that up?
Okay.
There was no one who was prevented from filing a proposal. I think what the difference is, is that the, there was some confusion about the local preference, but in actuality, most of the firms that bid were in Los Angeles or Los Angeles County, but nobody got the additional points.
But if the issue is they all applied and didn't get the benefit of the eight points, does that then put them at a disadvantage?
I think it affected everyone equally, didn't it?
No. Yeah, just off the top of my head, I'm not sure about all of the bidders, but both Blue Cross and Health Net would have received the preference, so there would have been no effect on this one issue that Health Net has brought up.
Our top three.
Okay, so, are you through, Mr. Parks? You're good? Okay, it's my understanding, Mr. Garcetti will second my motion, so we will continue this item for two weeks.
Okay.
Mr., yes, sir.
Is there any kind of requirement or need to go back to JMLB, Joint Labor Management, whatever that is?
Well, I think at this point, if we would just continue it for two weeks, and during that process, we'll be informed as to what we have to do or what we don't have to do. I think I'm seeing individuals shaking their heads, which means we don't have to return.
Okay.
It seems to me that if, historically, we've got the input of the employees at the Joint Labor Management Committee, that...
That, that, why don't, I think I can get this continued for a couple of weeks. Why don't we just play for time, and let's see what can develop? That's what my request to you is.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, we should not foreclose the idea of going back to the Joint Labor Management Committee.
If I could, if I could say something to clarify that.
Of course you can.
Part of the process that I'm understanding is that we're going back and negotiate a side letter with all of the unions. That is, does not get done in the JLBC process, it gets done with the bargaining units through negotiations, but we will solicit the input of, obviously, labor through that process.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, or...
Yeah, I just wanted to ask that, this go back to JLBC first before it comes back to my committee if possible?
Let's try it my way first, and then if we want to change that, you and I will speak over the next couple of days, because that may be the way to go. But what I want to do now is to buy us a couple of weeks. If we need it to go back there, you and I can chat Friday and figure that out, but so if we could...
Counselor Weston, so we do have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, it was seconded by...
Seconded, so let's put that to a vote.
I have not finished, though, I do want to make one point, which is, there was a somewhat ridiculous point which I have to address, that we've had a JLBC since 1989, we haven't overruled them. If we overrule them once, why bother having them? This is an advisory body, but it's an advisory body that we look to for advice, and usually, if labor and management agree on something, everyone's needs are represented. Once in a very blue moon of decades, this was not the case. Not every employee's needs was represented, so if we were to have to overrule them, I don't think in any way that reflects upon the necessity and the value of this, and I wouldn't, wouldn't fear to do it if we absolutely had to, but we've worked through this process, and rather than overruling them, we've worked with them, and I believe we can do that again.
I agree, Mr. Corretts. Now, if you would allow your president to land this airplane. So, if we could vote on my, Garcetti's...
Okay, we have...
That we're going to continue it.
So, we have a motion in front of us? Let's open the roll?
Mr. President, if I may, that would be to continue this matter two weeks to October 24.
Right.
Thank you, I wasn't sure.
Okay, so now we have a motion in front of us, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that'll be the action of this council?
Okay, and again, just to, Mr. Corretts, Paul, the way this is going to work is we have the two weeks, and then you schedule a committee after this two weeks of dialogue. I will expand the committee, and I know Mr. Krikorian's going to be on it, and I might, no, I'm going to leave, let you do it, because I was going to be on it myself, but, members, anyone else who has a desire, let me know, and we'll expand the committee for this one hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so that takes us to, I believe, general public comment? Okay. For, is Counselor Englander?
On item 14, can you send that forthwith, please?
Item 14, forthwith. This is for general public comment. One minute, please. Merv Evans, Rafael Peña, and Arnold Sacks, please come on up, if I called your name, please come on up. Merv Evans, Rafael Peña, and Arnold Sacks. Good afternoon, sir, please give us your name.
Morning, councilmembers, my name is Rafael Peña. Again, the key to flying cars is to make them light. They make a five-pound jet engine as small as an alternator that has a 50-pound thrust. Four of those were used to fly 40 miles in 10 minutes across the English Channel. Four 10-pound jet engines, plus fuel and passenger, weighed 300 pounds. Those four jet engines have a 400-pound thrust when you get a flying car. Experts agree, a jet engine is extremely simple. Air is compressed, fuel is added, as it expands, it pushes the jet engine. Its fuel efficiency and power are being greatly improved by a lot of people. I have a few ideas that will help. I have a few ideas that will help. Most, and again, most of the day, flying cars will be parked. When a helicopter is flying across the sky, count to 10, and you'll see.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Just a little bit...
Thank you very much. Our next group of speakers, Arnold Sack, Merv Evans, are you here? Please come to the microphone. John Walsh, Henry Marine, Antonio Ramirez. John Walsh?
Can we get a motion for two minutes? John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go to the website, look at the green box. What happened was, we have something called Super Bowl Ticket Gate. Now you know that you sit, Park sits on the seat of the Commission, of the, for the Coliseum. Zev Yaroslavsky was given illegally a ticket, two tickets, which he gave to a mystery constituent. Now, who was this mystery constituent? He broke the law when he took the tickets. He claims he paid 750. Pat Lynch says he didn't pay a dime, and he went to jail. He was the general manager of the Commission. If you want to know the name of the mystery constituent that Zev Yaroslavsky gave the two tickets to, it's on the website now. Last week, yesterday, I had five and a half thousand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Henry Marine, and then Antonio Ramirez.
All right, this here is a sign for fully utilizing constitutional knowledge and use of unionism. And up to now, you people ain't been doing it. MOUs show every percent of the money sheltered from the pay of others and me by approval of the hacker board and the city council. Apparently, you don't know the difference between a tax shelter and a savings. All it is, a deferred obligation, as Mr. Park's been telling you all all the time, you're just sheltering the money. The fact that you let the union administer 100% of the benefit sum, and the city agreed to shelter 10% of the pay sum, doesn't mean you got a savings, it just meant you got a public debt. All money shows that is legal tender for private or public debt, debts. The fact that you don't know the difference, that ain't my damn fault.
Thank you very much. Antonio Ramirez.
Let me point out a three-pronged problem which has been systematic in California. You have apartment owners who hire criminally illegal aliens and gangbangers as housekeepers, managers, and maintenance, or hire, they hire cheap labor, who are bent in harassing, stalking, invading tenants' privacies, entering their apartments without notice, failing to keep the premises clean from litter or anything unsanitary, and having these criminal deviants invite the criminal elements, friends, gangbangers, illegals, to vandalize and graffiti and destroy tenants' property and personal belongings. LAPD will tell you, it's a civil matter, take it up with the owner, don't support the LAPD. Case in point, property manager Gary Knase, K-N-A-U-S-E, income property, and owner Francis Smith at apartment building 245, South Lucas Avenue, LA, California 90026. Their people, their criminal illegal aliens, Carmen, Roberto, Santiago, and Renee, are felonious criminals, again invading the privacy of the tenants and harassing tenants.
Thank you very much.
What does LAPD say?
Thank you very much. Arminak Nogenian. And then Pancho Villa, DHD.
Good afternoon, respectful city council members. Dear fellow Angelenas, my name is Arminak Nogenian, I'm a liberal Democrat, human rights advocate, and as a progressive, I run for the seat of Los Angeles City Council this November. I propose to reduce taxes 50% against all producing manufacturers and gasoline selling corporations, and also wealthy homeowners, in order to replenish city coffers and remedy budget deficit of threatening proportions. I offer to create new jobs to build affordable housing and repair city infrastructure by means of giving city orders to private contractors. The discipline of wealth by taking from the rich and giving the poor will revive the city of Los Angeles. Promise of retailing, pension of city workers will remain intact with politics of social justice. Yet you, city council member, decided to cut, to give tax cuts to new businesses in order to look business-friendly. But you owe your loyalty to Angelenas constituents, not to wealthy business owners. Yet your city councilman decided to approve of layoffs and workforce reduction for city workers in your proposition four, and I wish I considered to be reactionary politics.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Pancho Villa, DHD. Mr. Villa, you here? Say no one. Marshall Blanchard?
Good afternoon, my name is Marshall Blanchard. I'm from the South LA District of Jan Perry's, and I'm just concerned about the lack of services that we have for trash pickup and alley cleanups. I've contacted Jan Perry's office on two occasions, and I've gotten no response from her office. It's been since July that I've been contacting sanitation and street services to clean up the streets and the alleys of South Los Angeles. I'd like to know what we can do to possibly get some faster service. I know directly right behind my house is a lot of large bulky item pickups, and at this point in time, homeless people are living in the alley, there's drugs that's being done in the alley, and nothing seems to be getting done. I'd like to, again, find out what we can do to help clean up the neighborhoods. That's it.
Consul M. Perry?
Contact my field office, ask for Hugo Ortiz. If there's one thing my field office is very good at, is doing the basics, street cleaning, alley cleanup. We work with a nonprofit in the area, they have a turnaround time of 48 hours. If you say your name again, and I'll see if you're in our database, because we record every complaint and give it a case number and track it all the way through to its conclusion. So if you give me your name again...
My name is Marshall Blanchard.
Marshall Blanchard?
Yes. You can speak with Loma White, I've emailed her, and I emailed you directly, and I got notes from her.
But I have not gotten any emails from you.
Consul Perry, if we can have him move to the side and follow up with the deputy. Thank you, Consul Perry.
And I'm sending my deputy over to get your address right now.
Thank you very much, Consul M. Perry. Matt Dowd, and then George Krikor Azarian.
A 14-year-old girl gets shot by the Taliban, unarmed girl, and you reduce public comment to one minute, you might as well rename this Pakistan, all right? Really, it's three and a half hours we sit here and wait. The city attorney's running away with $700,000 on the Venice thing, and the public comment's still fighting it. I put in a settlement proposal for 75% less than what I was asking for, so that we can end all this. But let me talk about Bill Rosendale, I saw his thing yesterday, okay? Now here's the thing, he's doing nothing about Venice, and doing nothing is just like Penn State. Doing nothing is a crime, and those guys get in trouble because they didn't say anything. I was up in Bill Rosendale's office in 2006 with Aaron Gross, and we were having a meeting the very first time, and here's what Bill Rosendale said in this small talk about Adelphia. He goes, "Yeah, I was fired by Adelphia, so I thought, fuck it, I'll run for city council, and here I am."
Your conduct is disruptive of this meeting. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Your conduct is disruptive of this meeting. Is your second warning, your conduct is disruptive of this meeting. Please escort him out. It's our third warning. Please. Please exit, please exit the chamber. George Krikor Azarian.
For the record.
For the record, he's still disruptive, still disrupting the meeting, still screaming and yelling.
Just, just before, before he starts speaking...
Just a minute, sir.
For the record, Mr. Dowd is still disrupting the meeting.
Please give us a minute. One more time, city attorney? Mr. City Attorney, one more time, please.
Mr. Dowd was continuing to disrupt the meeting and impeding the public comment rights of this next gentleman.
Can you tell him to go ahead? Tell him to start. Mr. Azarian, can you please start again? My apologies. Please start again.
He can't hear?
Yeah, you can hear.
You can start one more time.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
My foundation is give away food, clothes, furniture. I hire already until today, 155 people work on the new job. Two people be millionaire in the 40 years. I work now, until today, I am 90 years old, I gonna work, my, I got a two big project. I want a mayor of, mayor, Antonio Villaguerza, I want a three, four councilman, Eric Carrcity, Tom Labonche, Gregorian, and the race. Because I got a good property, I want to put in that zone. First district, 13th district, fourth district, and the two, second district. Very good. People gonna live free, like Section 8. My friend, she gonna pay everything.
Thank you, Mr. Azarian.
Only city, I work for city. I am LA...
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your trip to City Hall. It's okay. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Mr. City Clerk, what's next?
Mr. President, council has motion, posting, and referral.
Motion to post and refer?
The desk is clear.
Okay, members, any announcements? Consul Corretts?
Transportation Committee, rather than starting at 2 o'clock, will start at 2:15.
Okay. Any announcements? I do have one, this Saturday at St. Vincent's, there's Bi-National Health Week, there'll be free health services to the citizens of Los Angeles at St. Vincent's Hospital. Colleagues, adjourning motions. Consul Perry, please everybody stand for adjourning motions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Dr. William Matthew Brent. Senior Pastor Brent spent his entire life serving the community of South Los Angeles. He was a gospel preacher for 66 years, and a pastor of Evening Star Missionary Baptist Church for 41 years. Throughout his time, he was honored by elected officials for his work with young people and gangs, and by the city council for his outstanding work in the community. His work as president and secretary of the California United Baptist State Convention has been instrumental in ensuring a successful gathering of Baptist churches at the state level. Among his other accomplishments, he was the founder and moderator of the Fellowship Baptist District Association, and most importantly, he was a devoted father, and a husband of 44 years, and a grandfather, and he will be sincerely missed.
Thank you, Consul Perry. Any other adjourning motions? Say none, this meeting is adjourned.